I'm dating myself.
Welcome, Mr. Clerk.
I remember Jack Diddy. I'm dating all the songs I remember.
Present.
Present.
Present, Counselor.
Present.
Present, Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present, Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Present.
Present, Counselor Ash.
Here.
Here, Counselor Twigs.
Here.
Here, Counselor Shea. Absent. Counselor Fenton. Absent. Counselor Justin Hurst.
Present.
Present, Counselor Bud Williams.
Present.
Present, Counselor Ramos.
Present. Counselors, if you'd please rise for a moment of silence. Counselors, as our community continues to mourn the loss of four young lives that were taken in a tragic accident last week, our thoughts and prayers remain with the families of those who were lost, including our colleague, Counselor Gomez and his family. We dedicate this moment of silence to Cassidy Spence, Andrew Savage, Katrina Jones, Adriana May they rest in peace. Please remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, Mr. Clerk. The first item on tonight's agenda is a hearing on citywide interim regulations for recreational marijuana submitted by the Springfield Planning Board.
Good evening. Phil Dromey, Deputy Director from the Department Office of Planning and Economic Development, and I'm here tonight to present an amendment to the Springfield zoning ordinance for the introduction of interim regulations for recreational marijuana. As I'm sure the council is more than aware, back in November, the voters of Massachusetts approved a vote which would allow for the use and sale of recreational marijuana. And what we're doing here is basically, the interim regulations are basically a moratorium on the use, which provides the city an opportunity to draft regulations for that use. Currently, recreational marijuana is not a use that was anticipated under our current zoning ordinance, so we don't have any regulations guiding those. It's similar to what we did when medical marijuana came. Again, we didn't have regulations. We imposed a moratorium, which allowed, again, the city to draft regulations to determine the impacts of the proposed use on adjacent uses and adjacent land uses. This particular moratorium would be in place until December 31, 2017, or until such time that regulations are drafted, whichever is sooner. So, we're currently hoping to work with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to draft regulations. They were very pivotal in helping us draft the medical marijuana regulations. So, we're hoping to work with them and get those done relatively quickly. Again, the state is still drafting their regulations for this use. So, technically, I'm not even sure whether or not you could open a medical marijuana, excuse me, a recreational marijuana use in the city until those are drafted, but this is kind of like the belt and suspenders. We're just putting this in place. A moratorium is a tool that we've used numerous times over the years. Back in the early '90s or late '90s, when cell towers started popping up, we put in a moratorium until we could get regulations drafted. Digital billboards, we put a moratorium in place, again, to draft regulations. Adult entertainment, and then, most recently, medical marijuana. I do want to stress, this is in no way an attempt to try and thwart the vote that was taken. It was a legal vote. I believe, I read the regulations, they're a bit confusing, but my understanding, if a city or a town wants to completely ban the sale of recreational marijuana, there actually has to go out for another vote by that particular community. So, again, this is not an attempt to stop the ultimate sale of this, it's just to provide the city with an opportunity to draft regulations as to where the most appropriate location for these are to go. Again, it's pretty standard language. It's almost word-for-word, the language we use for recreation, I mean, excuse me, for medical marijuana. So, it was approved at the planning board back in December, so we're here tonight. I'm more than happy to answer any questions if...
Would the clerk please recognize Counselors in Seat Number Two and Seat Number Ten?
Counselor Fenton?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dromey, why 12 months? I know the legislature has decided on six. Is there a reason why we can't concurrently plan and possibly have this before us, sooner than 12 months?
Yeah, I mean, that was just a number I threw out. If, again, I don't, I'm hoping, again, to work with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. They're just in the process of trying to get these drafted, so it was just a date. I still believe, though, that even under the state laws, you would not be able to open one until, I think, 2018 was where you were even going to be able to open one. I think that's now been delayed six months by the recent vote, by the legislature, but...
Six months from 2018?
Right.
Six months, okay.
That's my understanding. So, I mean, again, I'm going to work, we're going to work as quickly as we can to get these drafted, but I just don't know how long that process will take.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor Twigs?
I have some constituents here tonight who would like to speak on this. What would be the procedure to allow them to speak on my behalf, or through me? Are you guys having a conversation about me?
There is an opportunity for opponents to speak.
I'm sorry?
We'll entertain that. Once we finish with Phil Dromey, the opponents will have an opportunity to speak. Proponents and opponents will have an opportunity.
Then I request a first opportunity for that.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Allen and Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Phil, you talk about Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and working with them. Is the work they're going to do on this apply to any and all communities that want to work with them on it, or is there any rules of the road as to how to do this?
Well, again, I can only defer back to how the medical marijuana regulations were drafted. They, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission provided a, kind of a baseline set of regulations. It was then up to the community to either adopt those or change them to whatever the, you know, the community wanted. So, we did take their draft regulations as a template, but then, you know, crafted them to fit Springfield. But I think what they're, hopefully, what they're going to do is come up with, basically, a template of how this should be regulated.
But some communities, I guess we plan to work with them, but some other communities may not, or they may just draft their own, et cetera?
Yeah, some communities may draft their own. I mean, a number of communities have already gone ahead and implemented moratoriums. A number of communities throughout the state have done that already. Some are planning to have a vote to actually ban it. I think in Falmouth, they're actually going to go out for a citywide or town-wide vote to actually ban the sale of it in the town. But, again, we would work with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to see what they come up with and then draft it, to see if it fits Springfield. You know, some of the things that we looked at for medical marijuana was, you know, where's the right location to have it? Should it be near a school? Should it be near a park? You know, are you a certain distance away from those? So, we would look at those same kind of issues when we draft these particular regulations to see where's the most appropriate locations for these particular uses to open.
So, what you're asking us to do is grant the 12 months to the end of the year, and also, in the meantime, you're going to come up with what you believe?
Correct. So, these would expire at the end of the year, or once the new regulations are accepted by the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, I have the same questions about who is going to decide the regulations. Is it working just with Pioneer Valley Planning? Anybody else? Is it input?
Well, we would, you know, as with all zone changes, we, anytime we propose a zone change, it's open to public hearings. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has, when they drafted medical marijuana, they held a number of opportunities for input, so I would expect the same kind of process that they've done in the past.
Of course, and this is so new, and this is citywide. This impacts Springfield, so following along with Counselor Allen said other communities could have different regulations.
Absolutely. I mean, other communities, absolutely. I mean, again, we, for, and I can only refer to medical marijuana, we said it has to be 500 feet away from a number of communities, a number of parks, schools, you know, whether another community chooses to do that, or they may say that they don't have an issue with it in their commercial district. So, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what the...
There's not a model from the state that you have to do certain things? It's Springfield will decide for themselves?
Well, again, similar to medical marijuana, there's a whole set of regulations that the state will draft. I think they're all going to have to be licensed, but in addition to that, the city can place either, I wouldn't say less restrictions, but they, we can place our own zoning requirements on that particular use. So, again, there's a whole set of regulations that the medical marijuana facilities have to abide by, but in addition to that, in order to locate here, you know, it had to be located in Industrial A, it had to get a special permit from the city council, so there's a number of things that a medical marijuana use has to do in order to open. I'm not sure how similar that's going to be to this. You know, I can only refer, you know, there's a use at the X now that I'm sure is looking to be able to sell this once it becomes available. We got to look at whether that's appropriate or not, and I think those are the discussions we can have as we move forward with the regulations.
Well, I understand we'll be listening to some constituents tonight, but I kind of agree with Counselor Hurst. I think, you know, for a referendum that was passed by the voters, I think a year's a long time for a moratorium, and maybe we might want to change the language to six months.
That's, I don't, I don't necessarily have an issue with that. I just, again, I think even with the moratorium for the medical marijuana, we had that done relatively quickly, so... But, again, this is not a use that I have any experience in, at least, at least writing zoning.
Are you making a confession?
Yeah, in the professional sense. So, I don't, you know, to, for me to write, you know, I'm going to be looking for other experts to chime in on how we regulate this particular use. It's just not a use that was contemplated in the zoning, so I don't want to...
Thank you, Phil.
Counselor Marcus Williams and Counselor Rook.
Mr. Dromey, just a quick question. When will you provide those recommendations to this body in regards to the studies that you're planning and...
Well, I have not even had a chance to talk with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. It's my understanding there, I literally had an email with one of the staff over there who has talked about that this is a process they're going to follow, so I don't know where in the process they're going to go. But, we are going to, we are going to look at other communities to see how those are done, you know, obviously Denver, and, you know, to see if those make sense.
And it will, like, it will run concurrently with, you know, whatever's going on at the state? So, therefore, before we, that does come to this body, there will be some...
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, that's another thing. I'm not sure what, you know, what requirements the state is going to have on these, and those, from my understanding, have not even begun to be drafted yet, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Rook.
Thanks, Mr. President. Phil, what, I guess I'm trying to get my head around this whole thing. What is everyone so afraid about the distribution of recreational marijuana? Wouldn't it be treated like a package store, or a CVS, or a Walgreens? I mean, people have been smoking it for, I don't know, since the 1960s?
Well, I don't tend to disagree with you, but, again, I think it's a use that at least should be studied to see what the implications of the, of the particular use is. We don't have, I mean, right now, it's not even listed in our zoning ordinance, so, you know, to determine where you could even, because these are going to be a licensed facility through the state, again, similar to medical marijuana, we didn't have regulations for those.
Right.
And we drafted those to see where, what, where was the most appropriate places for those to be. At the end of the day, the council may decide that they're perfectly fine, you know, and, you know, they can be treated as a CVS or a retail.
That's what I would think, yeah.
Well, and that's certainly a discussion we could have, but I think it, in order to protect the city, I think it is prudent to at least give an opportunity to have that discussion without the, you know, I've already gotten probably, you know, seven, eight phone calls on what's the process in order to open one of these. So, you know, people are, obviously, it's a, you know, they're looking for an opportunity to open these, and when people call, my answer is, I don't know. So, so I think, you know, until we at least have an opportunity to sit down and have that discussion, I think it's probably not a bad idea to do this. And, again, I'm not looking to delay this. If we can get it done in a month or two months, great. You know, I would like to get it done as soon as possible.
You think three months would be a reasonable amount of time?
Well, again, I have to defer to working with other groups to figure out how these get drafted, but...
Yeah, because North Hampton has one now, right, I think?
Well, they have a, they have a medical marijuana.
Medical, but not a recreation.
No, nobody has a, I just don't believe anybody's allowed to have a recreational marijuana facility. You're allowed, this in no way affects the ability of an individual to grow, you know? You can do that now, you can grow it in your home, so this is simply for the sale, you know, the retail sale of recreational marijuana.
Yeah.
So, right now, you can, you can grow up to, I forget what it is, 10 plants or 12, 12.
They had a woman, they had a woman who was arrested about a month ago. She was under the influence of alcohol in her car. The police went to the car and took her out of the car, and she was very combative. Same woman was arrested about two weeks ago by the state police. She had her medical marijuana, recreational marijuana with her. Got out of the car, was happy, sat in the backseat cruiser, talked to the state trooper. He said she was one of the most pleasant and politest people he's ever arrested. So, everyone's afraid that there's going to be this difference. It's, I'd like to see it approved to 90 days. Springfield's been the city of first for a long time. Why don't we set something? If it doesn't work, and it has to be tweeted, tweaked later on because of state legislation, we can go back and change it. Medical marijuana.
Well, but the medical marijuana...
Three places, three places in the city are selling it right now, just so everybody knows. And it's good stuff.
Giving it away.
No, I say that jokingly, but three of my friends have bought it already in the city. So, it's already being sold. People are already using it, there's no problems. I think a lot of people are just ramped up over this for the wrong reasons, and the state is talking to the gentleman who helped legislate it in Colorado, and that, like I said, that may take a long time, like Counselor Walsh said. It was approved and voted by, on by the voters. They want it, and overwhelmingly, they want it, so I think it would be great if we could put something out in 90 days and go back and change it if we need to. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Hello? I'm sorry. Thank you, Phil. I think, I believe that the state legislature has stated that recreational dispensaries won't be available to anybody until 2018, and from my memory, there's also a recreational law that you have to be over 21 years of age to possess or to consume, and there's also laws that you can't smoke it out in the open. There's already laws in place now that we have, that I think that, you know, SPD or state troopers that are out, are, have been enforcing some of these laws. I know it's a hard time to transition now, instead of asking for their medicinal card, but now, when it comes to the business of it, it just, like a couple of the council stated, the 12-month moratorium is the thing that bothers me. I think that in the six months that the state legislative, legislature will create these, these laws that we need to abide by, those would be our regulations that we can use so then it can better, it can, it can better help you, you know, kind of create that, that law, and, and it's just because giving it 12 months after the six months, it'll give us more time, because at the end of the day, am I right, we still can't open it until 2018 regardless of the process.
That's my understanding. I have heard there's some caveats to that, but, you know, so, again, this is just a, the 12, the 12-month is kind of a standard timeline that we put on moratoriums, but, again, I would, I don't disagree with you, you know? Once the state, you know, I, the state's going to hopefully create their regulations sooner rather than later, but...
The only question, more or less, is like, is the city going to let us, or let the community decide? I don't know, but how many of these dispensaries would go into the city of Springfield? I think that's kind of the only regulation that you guys are looking for.
Well...
Like, like the medicinal clinic, like, we only have one medicinal clinic versus five recreational sites? I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not saying that's fact. I'm just asking. Is that why we're proposing this moratorium, to figure out how many, if the state's going to give, would the state, well, we can't speak for the state, but I'll let you answer that.
Well, again, I don't know. I mean, I, we only have one medical marijuana, because it's the only one that's passed. There's really nothing to stop another one from applying to come into Springfield for another location. They have to be a certain distance away from each other, but there's, nothing in our zoning says we can only have one.
I have one other question for you, Phil. That medicinal clinic, because recreation was passed, can anybody walk into that facility and buy marijuana recreationally, or do they have to have their ID, their card?
I'm not 100% sure on that, but that's one of the caveats that I heard, that if regulations weren't completed within a certain timeline, if you had a medical marijuana, then you could start selling rec, so that's, I'm not 100% sure on that, but that's one of the caveats I heard.
Look, I just wanted to be, you know, transparent with the folks that I hear, that recreational marijuana cannot be sold in the state of Massachusetts till 2018, despite the facts, no matter what, but it can be given away. So, we still have those things that we can, we have to talk about when we have these provisions. If it's 90 days, six months, they can still give it away. Like, if you have, because you can't buy marijuana, but you can possess it because you hypothetically grew it, or somebody gave it to you, because at the same site that you're talking about, they're giving away brownies on the day after that it went, it went through, you know, after the December 15th, from what I understand. If I'm wrong, somebody correct me, but you can still give it away, but you cannot sell it, and you cannot buy it.
I mean, there is wording in the, in the language that talks about it can't, you know, you can't act like you're, you know, I'm going to sell you, you know, a, whatever, a t-shirt or something, and then I give you...
Oh, well, necessarily, they can't promote that they're going to give you, let's say, a J with a shirt, but, you know, if somebody's out there hypothetically giving it out, that's legal, right?
Yes.
That's something that I think this council needs to look at also, that they can give that out in the street and give brownies and edibles like it's chocolate, like if it's candy, or if, you know, it's just something, I'm totally for it. The business behind it, I, I really think this is an opportunity for minority business owners to get involved with, with this process. So, I think 12 months is a little bit too long, but I am total support of whatever you guys believe, but I think we should just shorten it up a little. If it's 90 days to six months, I think we should figure that out. But, thank you, Phil, I appreciate it.
I mean, I would recommend six months if we can, but, you know, that's up to you guys.
Being, being as transparent with the rest of the council.
So, anyone who would like to speak in favor of this proposed zone change, please step forward, state your name and address. Say again, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this proposed zone change? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
I don't know whether I can say it first, but, so, on my behalf, you can speak. I think there are some other issues that I talked to Counselor Twigs about...
Please state your name and address.
Linda Thompson, Forest Park, 83 Randolph Street, since 1983. I was talking to Counselor Twigs. Where are we going to get the supply of recreational marijuana to sell? Are we going to allow farmers and landowners in Massachusetts to have a special way to be able to produce marijuana, to sell to the people who are retailing it? It seems to me that the, that we're talking about business, and we have, believe me, I'm a criminal defense lawyer, we have lots of people in this county who are professionals at retailing marijuana. They know how to do it, they know how to grow it, they know what to do with it, and it seems to me that we are contracting and making a small issue to look at rather than a larger issue to look at, which I think is important, especially economically for our community. That is, where are we going to get the recreational marijuana from? Does anybody know? I'm interested in knowing that, and I think that we have people who can...
Just so recently, that there was a, I'm not sure which city it is, but somebody bought like a million-dollar establishment, I think it was a brewery before, and they, that city, because it's up to the municipality that this cultivation center, because that's what they're called, cultivation centers, where they'll be located, it's up to the municipality, and I think we've seen in the media that the mayor of Holyoke also has stated, because they have a lot of mills that are unused, that they want to bring it into those industrial facilities that aren't doing anything. And it's up to this body here to decide also, I guess, with that moratorium, is if we're going to let in cultivating centers also. Individually, as, as residents, you're only allowed to grow up to 12 plants if you have two adults in your house, but if you live by yourself, you can only have six. So, in some of these areas where they have this, a lot of land and places where, you know, a lot of people don't know where these facilities are, they're going to have cultivation centers, and that's how they're going to man some of these places.
And who will, who will, who will benefit from those cultivation centers?
Those cultiv, that would be the municipality that the cultivation center is located, and that's, that's something that they would...
That the city would grow the marijuana?
Not necessarily this city, but the city that it's in, that's their business. Our business is just, right now, is medicinal.
I, this seems, I have to say, this seems very, very complicated to me for something that the people have voted on, that they want. It seems really complicated, and, you know, if I can grow marijuana and give it away, and my experience as a, as a criminal defense lawyer with marijuana is that marijuana is, is not terribly dangerous. This passed in November. How come we are just now getting around to thinking about regulations and these things when this passed in November? It seems to me that there are plenty of studies out there that let us decide. I mean, everything is overregulated, and I think that we should look at what's happening in the rest of this country and see that we need a participatory democracy of people locally, and that we need to involve more people than cultural growing centers and all of those sorts of things. People need to be able to have cottage industries. People need to be able to not be afraid of the government, and I, I'm concerned about overregulating. If I wanted to go, I've been to Amsterdam, and I've been to a place where I could go in, look at a whole bunch of marijuana, sit down, have marijuana with my dinner, and leave my marijuana that I didn't use there on the table. Are we going, is that a marijuana use that's going to be allowed here? Are we going to be able to have a marijuana café where you can have, you know, coffee and marijuana for breakfast? You know, I, the limitations that I hear, this seems like it's getting very small and overregulated.
All right, we're still in the, we still have 15 minutes left for proponents. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the moratorium? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Say again, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the moratorium? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lisa, Lisa Marie Hagerbrook Jordan. I work for the Department of Public Health, and I voted it in medically, but I'm here for both what I've been seeing and as a citizen of the community and activist. Unfortunately, when I did vote it in medically four years ago, the last term, I didn't know it was going to... four years ago, the last term, I didn't know it was gonna grow, um, to the point where children in Springfield are, are being given marijuana. On the night of the election, I got terrified about Trump, but at the same time, at least they legalized marijuana, because, you know, people who sell it to the children, they don't care. I'm also here for the Department of Social Services, who just took a 20-year-old children away because somebody sold her marijuana, so they tried to use it to take her kids as a case. Um, we currently have a high school right here in Springfield, and the cops are staying very busy, to where they're getting 20 kids a day out of apartment building, and we're trying to tell them, people live there, please don't get the building shut down, but they keep breaking the security door to this apartment building. Yes, I was for medical marijuana, as long as it's controlled and it's not hurting other people. So, the cops are having a field day, coming to getting the children, because they're not going to school, they're getting high. Thursday and Friday, I was almost assaulted and attacked because the child just stood there, you know, as soon as I opened up my apartment door, they run out, but this one was so high, all they could do was sit there with three other boys, I thought it was four boys, but on Friday, I found out she was a boy, she said she gonna slap me. Um, the other one said they're gonna shoot a cop, you know, call the cops, well, I'll shoot him. I said, well, okay, I'll let them know that. This been going on for four years at this, before they legalized it. So, I'm concerned now as to prevention of, and safety concerns, and is the other government agencies in agreeance with what is happening now? Um, I had to put, thank God, an ADT system where I live at, um, on Saturday. I couldn't go to the movement of the other protests, or whatever was happening with the other events that I wanted to go that was historical, because I was too busy putting the ADT system in my house, because I got assaulted by kids that was like, I'll fight you. Oh, you filming me? Oh, you filming me? Uh, they wanna run up on me and take my camera and then invite us adults out to a fight. So, I'm here because I'm a parent, I'm a mother, and I'm also a government worker also to say, I don't appreciate the out-of-control situation that hasn't got under control of people abusing their children and other adults that cannot stand the smell. The smell is offensive, they get on a PBTA bus with it embedded in their clothes, they walk from the front to the back, and now the whole PBTA, public transportation, is a marijuana funnel. The whole bus has turned into a marijuana funnel, and we're riding on a marijuana wa, ride for other people that cannot stand it or don't want in the system. A lot of jobs, not just government jobs, temp agencies and everything said, if we give you a test, can you pass and get a job? If we give you a test, they don't have to be state-certified jobs, these are agencies that wants to know, if they give these people a test, can they pass it? So, is the other state agencies and jobs in agreeance where they will not give you employment, where it would hinder you, um, from getting your kids taken away because other people want to make money and not thinking about the other government agency that says, we wasn't for it, but we're gonna use it against you to, to hurt you and your family, or hurt you from getting a job, or take away your kids. So, I did vote it in a couple of years ago, but I've been put in a situation where my eyes were seriously open to all the alternatives of the cause and the effects. And I really want you to think about the effects, because it been brought to my front door, the ADT security company had to come, and we're just, we just want to make sure that, uh, everybody is aware that some people is not paying their rent. One gentleman grown with grandkids said he'll use it every single day, and then he's dripping himself out of a rent. I found myself in housing court, defending people, judge, can you give him one more time? She got one more time, I'm not gonna pull away the eviction. Two families was getting evicted with small children, because the person wasn't paying their rent, because they wanted to get, the other person that was written in the room wanted to get high every day, and they was beating them out of the rent, a young mother, you know, so, and the whole house was a domino effect. And, and, and then when the other adults talked to the person that was wanting to use marijuana every day, and knew the jeopardy of them putting the whole household in an eviction, they said, mind your business. If she's gonna come over here, then don't have her come over here. But, small children and babies were involved with this, this person, because they want to get high every day. So, here's the thing, they finna build a marijuana plant, um, no, a medical, a facility for addicts, people are in recovery. Marijuana is an addiction, and I don't like my head spinning, and I have this little saying that I put on Facebook, we have the rights not to get high. If it's not controlled, if you don't got it under control, it's a little bit, it is, I'm just being honest, out of control right now. I want to enforce the medical one, because I'm a herbalist at the same time a natural healer, but this one is a little bit where you're dizzy, your head is spinning, and you're getting into fights, and people are paranoid. I'm not quite sure. I do know it's a safety issue, and all the other states has to be on board, and I'll, I'll leave it like that, but, I just leave it like that. And, um, hopefully, they're taking in more considerations for safety and all-around view. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a few minutes left for proponents. If there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of the moratorium, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi there. My name is Ruth Morehouse, 58 White Oak Road, Springfield, Mass. 01128. I have to say, I'm a little bit surprised at Mr. Rook, a little bit. You know, I'm all for opening things to right away and getting them going, because Springfield is a city of first, of lots of things. I lived in 16 acres for 34 years, own a home, pay a lot of taxes. I work in Springfield schools, I'm a paraprofessional, but I agree with that woman right there. We can't start doing this and thinking it's all gonna be okay without some sort of rules, regulations, laws, whatever we have to do, whatever he has to do, because, look at Colorado already. They got more problems going on there. Yeah, they got lots of money coming in, pay taxes, pay things, but we got a lot of kids in this city who need some help, and a lot of parents, a lot of stuff going on, so, I'm not for open, you know, right away. Let's get some rules, regulations, and, and go from there, please.
Thank you. So, anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the moratorium, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. See none, this closes this portion of the hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of the moratorium? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name's Alan Agniti. I live at 161 Long Hill Street in Springfield. Uh, I would, uh, first like to commend, uh, those counselors who have said we must respect the, uh, will of the electorate, as expressed back in November. Uh, it's very unfortunate that our legislature, in their wisdom, has decided to put things off for six months, but it's already six months that things are put off, so why does the city have to put things off themselves? Uh, I would also commend, uh, Counselor Rook for his very, uh, perceptive comments about the nature of marijuana. Um, you know, it, uh, if we did have as many marijuana outlets as we do have package stores, it wouldn't really make any difference. Because, folks, I would like you all to keep in mind the fact that marijuana is out there, has been out there for decades, and where it comes from is a very big question. I think one of the major reasons that the referendum, uh, should have been passed and was passed is because people know marijuana is out there on the streets. And what people tend to forget, especially those who are concerned about possible bad effects of marijuana, is what is this marijuana on the streets being laced with? You don't know what's being, what you're buying when you're out on the sidewalk buying something from somebody. Most people do buy it from friends, and as we all know, it's a very prevalent practice, but, you know, there are, especially teenagers, kids, out there buying it on the sidewalks. And what are they buying? They're told it's marijuana, but what do we know what's in it? So, you know, it might be laced with cocaine, or heroin, or something like that. So, folks, this is no time to be, start delaying the implementation of a very rational legislation that was put forward by the referendum. The referendum already provides that cities can regulate the sale of marijuana in terms of location, the hours, the signage. You can't have any public displays in terms of window displays. I mean, it's all right there. So, instead of a six-month, or a one-year moratorium, or even the six-month moratorium, which more reasonably was suggested here, I would encourage people to ask the planning department to come up in three months with a program as to where it's gonna be, uh, located and pla, placed before you in three months. Okay? Because, again, this whole talk about moratoriums is just feeding what a lot of people feel about state government and city government, which is, you people just dilly-dally, you drag your feet, you don't listen to the people. So, please, listen to the people, and let's get this rational, reasonable, safe regulation as passed, uh, or law as passed in November. Let's get it going, so that we can have a safe distribution of a very common product known as marijuana. Okay, thank you very much.
So, anyone else who would like to speak in opposition of the moratorium, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Say again, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of the moratorium? Please step forward. Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. There's a five-minute rebuttal for the proponents. Is there anyone who would like to rebut anything that was mentioned? Does you want to speak?
My name is Mary Dionne. I live at 374 Forest Hills Road, and while a vote was taken, it was taken with due respect that our legislators, our people of faith, our community, all of our community, will have the opportunity to have some input. I will tell you, I am extremely nervous about this, and whatever adults do, they do, but I'm extremely nervous about our children. And we have little ones out there now, five years old, four years old, eight years old. It's the opportunity for them to get a piece of candy, the opportunity for them to now be fed something that at least we have a little bit more control of now. A moratorium is put in place so that everyone can talk about this, so that everyone can put this on the table and decide what is the best way to do this. And I don't think three months is long enough. And we have a state right now that actually voted it in, but we also have a state that's listening to other states, Colorado, being the place, who are very concerned now about what they did and how they did it. So, maybe what we should do is find out what they did and how they did it, so that we don't do it. But, I'm with you, safety, it's safety for everyone, and now we're talking about our babies, not just our teenagers.
So, anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the moratorium, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. So, anyone who would like to speak in opposition? There's five minutes for the opposition. Is there anyone who would like to go forward and speak in opposition?
My name is John Thompson. I live at 83 Randolph Street in the Forest Park area. I think it's, I just want to say a couple of words about what this, what the topic is here. Uh, it's not a question of whether or not there's going to be a commercial marijuana sold in Springfield, it's just a question of how and under what circumstances. And while there are a lot of people, or some people here who've expressed apprehension about this happening, that's not really what the moratorium proposal is about. It's just a question of regulating the manner and means, and not, and, and just incidentally, the timing, that is, when, when this goes into effect. Uh, the, it's not going to change the moratorium, and the regulations are not going to essentially change what has already happened. So, I think that's important to remember. Um, this is not a product or a substance that requires a lot of regulation. It isn't a difficult task to figure out where in the city, uh, if there should be any limitation on where these, uh, outlets should be. It shouldn't be difficult to figure out where the best outlets, uh, should be located. And the time crunch is, actually runs in the opposite direction, as people have suggested. I think it was Counselor Rook who said, uh, experience will show quickly if, uh, first of all, if, uh, the, the state law requires some adjustment in regulations that are passed, and there turns out to be some conflict, or if there are some difficulties with particular locations, those adjustments can be made. So, there really isn't a good reason for delaying this, and there are good reasons for going ahead. Uh, the main one being, this is something that was brought about by a democratic vote, and it's something that the majority of the people, a big majority of the people decided was appropriate, and it should not be stalled.
All right, thank you. So, anyone else who would like to speak against the moratorium, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, before we close the public hearing, any questions from the council? Counselor Allen?
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Um, Phil, could you come back up to the podium, please? So, we, I, we've heard good testimony from a lot of citizens. I am, I remain a little confused on this point. If we don't take any action tonight, is, I mean, I'm not suggesting that's what's gonna happen, but you've brought this before us, suggesting a moratorium three mo, you know, 12 months, and we're debating six months, three months. If we didn't take any action, is there anything that can happen in 2017 anyway, or has the...
Well, again, I...
According to Counselor Gomez, and I think, I had heard what, what he said, I agree. What, my impression is that what he said is true, that nothing can happen until 2018 in terms of selling it. Is that true?
That's my basic understanding. However, I have been told by a couple different people that there are some caveats to that. So, what exactly those are, and again, I think it, it, it's more toward what happens with the, if a medical marijuana use is already established, if regulations weren't drafted within a certain time period, those uses would then be allowed to sell it. I...
Well, is that what you were referring to before, that if, that there's a scenario in which some rec, people who want recreational marijuana could get it from a medical marijuana facility?
That's my understanding, but I'm not a...
Kind of speaking about before, is that...
I'm not 100% clear.
So, so, so we gotta solve something here, you know, tonight on this. If, if it can't be sold until 2018, it seems like that's kind of automatically an 11-month moratorium. Not suggesting that's good or bad, it just, if that's what it is, that's what it is. Uh, it seems to me that, um, that we could be ready to go, as soon as the state allows us to be ready to go, and, and by instituting some sort of time limit on the work you're gonna do, which would be finding out that exception, finding out the rules, and PvP, meeting with PVPC and all that. I, I mean, it seems to me that, that we don't lose anything. I'm not, I'm not hearing any functionality or availability is gonna be lost if we institute this tonight. And you're...
I, I would agree. I mean, the...
So, I, with that being said, um, I think it's been good testimony about this was passed by the, by the citizens, and we need to be proactively moving forward on it. At the same time, we need to be cautious as elected officials who represent the, the good of the, you know, trying to look out for the best things for our community. I mean, given that, I, I would think that, you know, say, uh, was it the end of January, maybe a five-month moratorium, get some regulations that you... Get some regulations that you suggest, or maybe four months by the end of May or something, so that we can debate them in May or in June, and then have something that we put in place by the summertime, or figure out, and it's not going to affect the availability, but I guess I would suggest, we're at the end of January just about, that we go with a four-month moratorium. Therefore, we have May and June, as it's coming to a close, we have the Health and Human Services Committee can talk about it, whatever other committees can have some public meetings on it. And then before the summer slowdown and council meetings, et cetera, we get somewhere with it then, and be ready to finalize it in the, in the fall, or whatever. And I'm not, I don't think that's any delay, I think the-
No, I wouldn't disagree with you. I, I think it's, a lot of this hinges on when the state creates their regulations. I mean, that's the big difference between this and the medical marijuana, is when we did draft those, we had the state regulations in place.
And the state is working on these, and do you have any timeframe on when they're-
I have no clue when they're going to-
So can you find out the, some of that stuff?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can shack. I don't, I'm not even sure what, there's supposed to be a committee that's set up, and then they're drafting it, so I, you know, it's a, it's probably going to be a lengthy process.
It's supposed to be a committee within the city, or?
Well, no, it's a, the state's supposed to create a recreational board, I guess, is it, for lack of a better word.
I mean, it could, we could vote on a moratorium tonight, if we voted on my recommendation of four months.
I mean, that's fine, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with the, that's-
Even so, we can start here. Counselor Rook is chair of, I believe, of Health and Human Services. This might fall under, it seems like it would fall under that, because medical marijuana fell under that committee last year, right, when Counselor Gomez was chair of it. So my recommendation is a four-month moratorium.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is, this is similar to the medical marijuana. That was also voted in by the public. But we placed a moratorium on it until regulations could be passed. So, you know, to me, this is, this is the same process we're following as we did with-
In effect, it's not a moratorium. The, the state has already said you can't do this until next, until 2018. So we're just trying to lay out this year so that we can do the right due diligence at the right time, this year, and so that we do the, so we know what we're voting on. And you get, you know, come back to us in four months with your best understanding, have some committee meetings, whatever. Anyway, thank you.
We, we've, we've, we've passed the proponent and opponent's portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to hear from the constituent on this matter, or do you have a-
I asked you to let me speak, this is-
Is there anyone who would like to-
No, because you closed the portion, you just asked you, I want you to speak. And I'm giving you the opportunity, I'm telling them to let you speak, so you can come up with a question.
I have a question. I have a question. You may continue, or you may answer your question.
In the Thompson 83 Randolph Street, is regulation about distribution the only way that marijuana can be distributed? In other words, are we going to create a distribution system that creates a black market? That's what I want to know. Is the only way that marijuana can be distributed through a regulation where somebody can afford to buy a storefront, or something like that?
I believe we can't answer that question until the state regulations in six months come in, so they can guide us into the correct way. And then it gives us in those four months, what Phil is trying to propose on the moratorium, so then the city can better handle that information once this comes down to us. I don't believe that, I cannot speak for the other, the other counselors, but I don't believe the city right now has ever or had the conversation in the last year or so of a cultivation center in the city of Springfield. We have had the conversation, and we have a, a medical dispensary, but now what we're trying to do is get a harness and an understanding on what it is that we need to learn through the state on how to handle recreational right now. Even though, even though recreation is still law, and it's, through the referendum, it's legal, we still can't make a decision to hand out these special permits without our guidance from our state legislature, which they have a moratorium for six months.
I really can't speak to the-
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to answer her fully. I understand your concern, you know, and the concerns of everybody else, but I believe that, Mr. President, that our state legislature's already in a six-month moratorium. I think we need to leave it in the hands of, of those, those folks that we look towards that, that kind of education when it comes to these, these hard topics. I know that, I understand the severity of this. I have young children, I have kids, but at the same time, even if we put a four-month moratorium, the state still has a six-month moratorium. So in the end, until that stuff is worked out on a state level, what we're doing is just putting a regulation on the regulation, and then regardless of the regulation from the state is going to supersede our regulation anyway. So, we're here trying to better and understand, should we put four months, which we can amend the date instead of December 31st, 2017, to May 30th, 2017? And then from there, I think he can come back, and then we can extend that moratorium, because here in the language, it does state whichever is sooner. So the state might even come back, even though there's a moratorium in six months, can come back within those four months and still give us another guideline, and we can revisit this again.
Are there any final questions from the council? Before we close the public hearing?
I just want a motion that we, for the section 47114, that the expiration, that we change the date from December 31st, 2017, to May 30th, 2017.
We'll entertain that motion once we close the public hearing. Thank you. Are there any final questions before we close the public hearing? We cannot accept any further evidence once the hearing is closed.
I have a question.
Are there any final questions from the council?
We finished before.
Seeing none, this closes the public hearing.
So if they come back before, we don't-
Counselor Gomez has a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Rook. Mr. Clerk, what was the clarification of the motion?
The motion was to amend section 4.71.114, title expiration, which changes the first sentence to this section 4.71. It effective until February 24th, 2017. May 30th, that's actually-
Does everyone understand that motion? All right? Counselor Walsh on the motion.
I favor it. Six months, I'm waiting to see what the will of the council is, and if the four months doesn't go through, then I will suggest six.
Fair enough.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Chair is in doubt? Mr. Clerk?
This is a vote for amendment 4.17.114 to read. This section 4.7110 should be effective until May 30th, 2017. Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
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 No.
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 No. Not sufficient? Counselor Walsh?
Mr. President, I'd like to propose a six-month moratorium on this issue.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ash. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it.
Actually, it'd be good if it ended with the fiscal year.
Any final comments before we take a vote? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. I will, counselors, I will entertain a motion to take the matter in one reading under Rule 22C. This is a matter that would take two, two readings. However, we can pass this under 22C. I will entertain a motion for-
Good.
Mr. Clerk, just a point of clarification. Didn't we take, I think we did at our last meeting, didn't we vote on it? We took first step.
First step.
This will require two readings at this meeting, so if the body of the act on this motion, your reading, and the, that would be passed, or two readings. Right beginning of this meeting, and first one reading, and we pass.
I understand, okay.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
One pass and it's completed. More to it. Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Shay, ask.
Yes.
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 Yes. Counselor Bully?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Evans?
Yes. More than sufficient? Motion passes.
Excuse me.
Item number two, Mr. Clerk.
I have been presumed as a hearing of the capacity to force a special permit to operate a drugstore window. Problem was, it couldn't be made out.
State your name and address for the record. This is a public hearing. The proponents will be given 20 minutes to speak and make their presentation. At the conclusion, the opponents will be also given 20 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Paul A. Sylvia. I'm with Ayub Engineering Corporation in Pawtucket. I'm representing McDonald's. I would like to also introduce Rhona Murray, who's an executive with McDonald's, and Mr. Wes Powell, who would be the franchise owner. I have a holdup here of what the proposed facility would look like, but I would like to begin my comments by stating that this project was before this board about two years ago, and this board approved the project. For whatever reason, the project did not get built, so we're back basically with the same project as before. Certainly during that time period, several of the approvals that we had in place came and went. So what we did was, we went and we reapplied. First and foremost would be the Conservation Commission. We have a letter from them indicating that they are in approval of the project. I've also have a letter from Mr. Shumway, he's a director of Public Works and city engineer, a letter on record from him that he has approved the project. And also from Mr. Phil Drummy, who's the, the city planner. I've gone over the project on numerous occasions with him to make sure that everything was according to your, your particular rules and regulations. Just a brief bit about the project. 1402 Allen Street, there is an existing McDonald's there, it's aged. McDonald's would like to raise that, that building, put in a brand-new one that would be in much better keeping with, with the, with the surrounding property. Also, it would be brought up to all current life safety, fire prevention, electric building codes, so it would, it would really add to the community. Now, there was one caveat that I would like to add to all this, and this is probably the biggest approval that we did receive, and that was from Walter Gould's committee, the OB, Outer Belt Citizens Association. We have gone round and round with them relative to making sure that the project would be conforming to what they would like to see. And there were some issues regarding the hours of operation. After some negotiation back and forth, we have come up with a game plan that is, I believe, certainly approved by Walter and also by the, by the owner. So with that all said, we are back here tonight, and we would certainly like to ask your indulgence and to reapprove this facility. The anticipation is that it would be under construction sometime in March at the latest. I would take any questions, if anybody has any.
What's the proposal, the timeframe for construction?
The timeframe for construction would probably be 90 days, sir.
So back operational?
July.
July, yes. And what were the hours that you agreed on?
The hours of operation that we, would you like to speak with, speak to that?
The hours of operation is the same as it has been for the last, I think, four years.
Now, that was 24 hours.
Oh, 24 hours.
It is 24 hours, it has always been 24 hours.
Sir, if you can, please state your name and address for the record.
First name is Wes, last name Powell. Address, 32 Renee Lane Enfield, Connecticut, 06082.
Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. I, I don't want to disagree with the man, with the gentleman, but who just said 24 hours, it has been 24 hours. You should all have this one pager on your placemats, which is, it's not in the form of a letter, it's kind of in the form of bullet points. The Outer Belt, I've been working with Outer Belt Civic Association on this issue on a continuing basis, this is in my ward. And you might recall, in December, we brought this up and said we would come back. Counselor Fenton was president at the time and said, "Would you please come back with a resolution, you know, by the end of January?" Well, this is it. This is the resolution that these hours, which hopefully everybody got one of these.
Is that what he?
It simply says, "The Outer Belt Civic Association met on January 10th, 2017", which is last week, "taking unanimous vote on the hours they would be opening. After weeks of discussion with McDonald's, the following hours were agreed upon. Sunday to Thursday, 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. in the lobby. 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., on Friday to Saturday, 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. in the lobby. And then the next section, Sunday to Wednesday, 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the drive-through, and Thursday to Saturday, 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. at the drive-through." Thank you, Walter Gould, President, and Mary Dionne, Vice President. So there has been negotiation back and forth. I believe it's clearly delineated here, and I believe the issue is resolved as far as I, so, thank you. I hope I stated that right, but I just believe that's-
Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. You stated it right, but as I got a call from the owner, third one afternoon, and I guess, that's the owner, that's the gentleman, the money is being put up, invested, it's not McDonald's, it's his money that's being put up to be, to be invested.
So McDonald's, I guess, had the meeting with the Outer Belt, Walter Gould had a great meeting. He had no knowledge of the hours. He's under the impression that it would be 24 hours now. That McDonald's has been there 24 hours for as long as I can ever remember, over 40 years. I know I'm dating myself. I'd like for him to get into the project a little bit, because the way these hours are, it doesn't work for a businessman nowadays. You're going to have a Taco Bell coming to you a little bit later that's going to say it's okay to be open after midnight. And the McDonald's on the north end, they do a great job. There's another operator, he has police there 24 hours, they've had, never had a problem. So what I would suggest, that we somehow go back to the table, I know time is of the essence, that we create a plan that this gentleman can operate for 24 hours so we can pay his mortgage. This is over $3 million project, probably in the end, probably a lot more than $3 million. Unfortunately, he wasn't at the meeting, he didn't meet with the neighborhood council, it's unfortunate, it's a breakdown of communication. But I do know that the casino's going to be 24 hours, all these other restaurants are 24 hours, and we're going to kind of like ham, hamstring him, this gentleman. I think if you look at the way, even Armory Street, same thing, Armory and Liberty, they're 24. They have police that come on every weekend that supervise a 24-hour service. They had no problems, I think, Gomez, that's in your district, that owner, does, Dan Aspert does a great job. So I'd like for you to, to speak for yourself, sir, that's your money that you're investing, not McDonald's. See, most people think McDonald's does not put one dime to these projects out of his pocket. If that project doesn't work for you, then you have to say, if you want to take it, you do, if you don't, you don't. It's up to you. Now's your time.
Just go back a bit. I bought the restaurant two years ago with a contractual agreement with McDonald's that says I will keep the restaurant operational 24 hours a day. And that is a franchise agreement for 20 years. Part of that stipulation was that I would rebuild this restaurant. And I've just looked at the, the cost of rebuilding this restaurant, it will exceed $3 million. And if the sales is reduced, by reducing the hours, it is my understanding and my knowledge that the restaurant will not be able to service alone. knowledge that the restaurant will not be able to service alone. And that could lead to a potential real problem in the future. It's, this is based on dollars and cents. And the restaurant has been 24 hours for as long as it's been there, and I signed the agreement and expected that I would be able to rebuild the restaurant under those conditions. And now this would, you know, make, it would put the project in jeopardy, or I just don't know what the solution would be. Because these restaurants are based on their sales, and if you take the sales down, you can't meet the bank's requirement. And so it's a real dilemma for me.
I know McDonald's is in, maybe you can shed some light as why did McDonald's, why did you agree to going less than 24 hours when it's always been at 24 hours? Based upon what? What was the information you based that agreement upon? Based upon what? Yeah, you. You said you cut, you signed the deal.
My name is, my name is Rona Murray, I'm a construction manager for McDonald's.
Talk to the mic, please, ma'am.
My name is Rona Murray. I'm a construction manager for McDonald's. It's true that McDonald's would prefer to have a 24-hour opening at a restaurant. We would always like more hours for our restaurants. But in negotiations with the Outer Belt Bank Neighborhood Group, we have come to negotiation with them because they will not support our rebuild unless there is a reduction in hours. We bravely want to rebuild this restaurant, and I'd like to do it this year. I got the approval for it three years ago, and I lost my funding because we couldn't get the decisions made in time. I would like to rebuild the restaurant this year, and I know I need the support of the neighborhood to do that.
So I was saying, what was the hours reduction in the hours? They said, "All right, if you don't go along for the reduction of hours, then we're not going to support the project." Is that what was said, ma'am? I mean, I've done all the McDonald's in Springfield since I've been on the council, and the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes, they, they...
And the CVSs.
They said they wouldn't support.
I understand how it works, but...
They wanted the reduction in hours in order to endorse the project.
What was, again, maybe they'll have to, maybe Walter answers. What was that based upon, limiting the 24? Crime, police, I wonder, what was that based upon?
Walter can answer that question more efficiently than I can.
Okay, that's fair. I'll ask that when I get up there.
Well, I think I can answer that question. When I met with the city council, with the neighborhood council the first time, they voted to support the 24 hours of operation. I then had a, you know, some conversation with Walter that said he spoke to a friend of his in the police department, and then there was these supposedly police calls that came to the restaurant. I then went and got all the data myself, and according to the police record, and they're very different than my record, I guess McDonald's is a popular address that you can use to create a process that doesn't really exist. I've had the restaurant for two years, and I've never had to call for the police for any reason. However, when you look at the record that they have, it seems like every police call that goes into that area has the address of McDonald's. Now, when I did talk to the lady at the records department, she said, "Select those that you think may have originated from McDonald's." I then asked Walter to, "Let's sit down, and you can tell me which one you think originated." We had a, he was never able to make the meeting. So then he called for another meeting, said he wanted to rescind the vote, and his only concern was all of those calls that was for the police, which was various things, like from drugs to car theft to all kind of stuff listed. There was some calls that were just listed as disturbance, and I don't know what that means. And I guess in his opinion, if it said disturbance, then it must have been at McDonald's. But I've never had an encounter with the police. And I think I know most of the police officers that service the area. I've had conversations with most of them. Okay, I own the restaurant down the street, and I've had personal conversation. I've made some changes to the restaurant to help the police department control some of the crime that they're dealing with. So Walter and the neighborhood agreed to rescind the vote. And then I attended that meeting, and the next thing I know is that there's this document floating around that I agreed to these hours. I've never been told that there was a meeting. I don't know when the meeting was held, and I don't know who represented me. I was never at that meeting, and I have, I do not have an email in my phone or anything of that nature that says we were holding a meeting to decide on the hours. So those hours were determined by someone else, and my business case says it doesn't work.
Counsel Williams.
How many McDonald's do you own in, just in the city of Springfield?
Four.
How many McDonald's do you, give us the address of all your McDonald's in Springfield.
771 Page Boulevard, 24 hours.
That's yours, 24 hours.
360 Main Street, 24 hours.
24 hours.
1398, you called it 1402, the restaurant has two addresses, Allen Street, 24 hours, 611610 Boston Road, and that is not 24 hours.
Okay, so you have four McDonald's you operate in the city.
Yes.
Three of the four are 24 hours. Have you had any trouble at any of those McDonald's?
Not at all.
I've never heard of any trouble. As a matter of fact, I checked myself today. I don't know how they, you know, McDonald's, when you get a call, they say, "Oh, we're just at McDonald's." Everything is at McDonald's, and that's how it's reported, because it's an area. And I just don't want you to be penalized, because if the council voted to give you that 24 hours, and then they go back, and nothing against Walter, he's probably got some more information from the police department, saying that we don't want to get 24 hours, I don't think that's fair. But you, you, you're a proven track record in the city. You pay your taxes. You don't have any complaints out of these other four, the four McDonald's that you own in this city. You're an asset to this community. And I know if you have three of the, three of the four, and if you had Boston Road, you probably could get that one if you really wanted to. Maybe that's the reason why you don't want that. So I hope that when it comes time, and we can change these hours and work with the neighborhood council, and maybe give you 24 hours on a trial period to see how it works out. If it works out, then you go forward. But, but to make this man go for the limited hours, I know council, you did a lot of work on this, but I just couldn't support these hours. I'd have to go 24 hours. I mean, this is a proven commodity in the city of Springfield. This is a good, clean businessman, trying to make it in this city, paying a lot of taxes. I want to be an asset to him and not a liability.
Counselor Allen.
So let me tell you the history of this that I know. I attend the Outer Belt Civic Association meeting regularly for seven years now, and there have been several different businesses. We just had a car wash year before us, a little while ago. We had Burger King for their hours or something. There's a lot of businesses out there, and there's a lot of, a lot of, you know, Christopher's Sports Bar opened up. There's a lot of activity which comes before the Outer Belt Civic Association. I was at the meeting, just in my recollection, about, I don't know, three or four months ago, and the gentleman, I'm sorry I didn't get your name, sir.
Wes. Wes?
Wick.
Wes.
Wes. And Wes was there, and the meeting was going fine, and...
South.
And it turns out that at the end of his presentation on the hours, et cetera, and the back and forth, it either came at that point, the question was about, has there been police activity there, you know, you know, how does it work in the middle of the night kind of thing? And subsequent to that, I'm not sure exactly, and Walter can say exactly if he gets up there, and Walter found out that there were police reports of activity there. That's what prompted the further conversation. I was not in that conversation. That was between the civic association and the business, and then I heard that the business had agreed. So I don't want to seem like we're ignoring Wes. Wes was at the meeting, and then there was other conversations that took place between the civic association and the police or, and, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name either, but... Construction manager for McDonald's. So, I mean, we're in a, we're in a pickle. I don't think everybody did anything wrong, but it's hard to vote on this if we're going to have this. I think Walter should be allowed some time to talk, but, or marry, about what happened, but that's the background that I can give as honestly as I can give it. And when it came back, there had been some agreement with somebody that the reduced hours was acceptable. When Wes showed up tonight, that was the first time that I first, I'm not in all the meetings, but I'm in the regular meetings. I'm not in the little off-to-the-side meetings about when a business meets with a civic association. I may or may not be in those. But anyway, so we're in a situation where we've got different perspectives, different things that have happened. Counselor Williams is, you know, brings up a good point. I just, I didn't expect this to come up tonight in this fashion, so I don't know if we hear from Walter and maybe just table this until something else, till there's further conversations or whatever. I defer to you, Mr. President, but...
We are still in the proponents portion of the hearing. We will have an opportunity for opponents to speak, but if you, if you're entertaining a motion, or if you're considering a motion to committee for whatever reason, you may want to make that motion prior to close, closing the public hearing. Does that answer your question, Counselor?
I'm sorry?
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to lose the opportunity to have the discussion, whether it's here or wherever. I don't want to put everybody in a position of voting yes or no for something that there's these different feelings about and create conflict situations. So whatever we can do to make it a better process, whether we put it in committee, whether we table it, whatever, I don't know if we can have that conversation here, but, you know, I'm just, so...
Well, if, if there is a motion to committee, Mr. Clerk, you can weigh in on this, but if you make the motion prior to closing the public hearing, that is the only way that we can accept new evidence, and so...
The only way, what?
The only way that we can accept new evidence. And so if you're, if you're looking to have that discussion in committee, then you want to make the motion prior to the closing of the public hearing.
Then I make a motion to committee.
Is that, is that accurate, Mr. Clerk? There is, there is an opportunity to continue the matter. However, sending the matter to committee would not... Mr. Clerk, would you... Clarify that explanation?
This is an open public hearing, so you can continue or lay the matter on the table to have the hearing not reopen, but continued at another city council meeting. Technically, you can't have any, you're not supposed to be having subcommittee meetings on matters like this. The hearing is where you gather the evidence to decide.
Is there a way that we can continue the hearing tonight and then lay it on the table at the end?
Correct. Yes.
So we hear, everybody here hears the evidence, here's the, here's the different stories, and then we lay it on the table at that point, if that's the right thing to do?
The city council could, if it wanted to, lay the matter on the table or continue it right now, and then reopen the hearing at a subsequent meeting, or not reopen technically, but have the hearing continue at a subsequent meeting.
Well, I mean, if we have a subcommittee meeting, I know I just made a recommendation for that, but if we have a subcommittee, we're not going to have 12 councils about it.
You're technically not supposed to be having subcommittee meetings on special permits.
So what?
All evidence is supposed to come up.
Right, so, so let's continue with the, with the hearing tonight, and if, you know, if, if it seems like we can make, have a vote without conflict or something about, did everybody get hurt, we'll go forward. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to lay it on the table at that point.
Is a motion made by Counselor Allen to table the matter?
No. Why can't he just refer to committee?
To keep the hearing open?
Yeah.
And table the matter?
Yeah.
Can I add something?
To keep the hearing open. What, to continue the matter, is that...
As a point of information, just to continue the hearing, so both sides, pro and con, can speak.
Continue the hearing tonight.
And we can gather the information tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We still have, there's no, there's no motion required to continue tonight. Counselor Allen's request is to continue tonight.
To lay the matter on the table.
Correct.
Just send it to committee?
Counselor Rock.
Mr. Wes, could I ask you, how many meetings did you attend?
I attended two meetings. The first meeting, the first meeting was when they voted to approve the 24 hours. The second meeting was when they decided to rescind the vote. I never attended the meeting.
What were the, what were those dates as best you can recall?
I really don't...
I went to the third meeting.
She, did...
Are you the franchisee or the construction manager?
I work for the corporation. The corporation's made the application this evening. The corporation is in agreement with the reduced hours because I need to build this year. I need to build this spring. If I get continued again for another month, this project probably won't happen. I have to break ground in the next eight weeks, so...
As the corporate representative of McDonald's, you agreed to the hourly reductions?
Yes, sir.
But the franchisee didn't?
Yes, that's true.
Wow.
Somebody owes you some money, Mr. Wes. It's a lot of Happy Meals.
It doesn't work that way. It won't be the money coming my way, but I have to put the money out, so...
So, just so I can understand this, you, you negotiate on behalf, and I understand the corporate structure.
Wow.
You negotiated the compromise to get the project to move forward to meet the budgetary guidelines of McDonald's. The franchisee, who owns the franchise, didn't agree to the hourly reduction. But were you invited, Mr. Wes, to any of the meetings? You were invited to two?
Yes.
And who invited you to those meetings?
Walter did.
But beyond that, you weren't invited to any meetings?
I have, I did not participate. I did not know the meeting took place. I got a note from the corporation saying that the hours has been approved, and I asked the question, what hours?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I thought this was going to be an easy vote.
Counselor Hirsch.
And this question is not for you, Wes. This question is for...
Hold, I gotta listen over here.
For this young lady. It's not for you, Mr. Wes. For the person who was building, were you under the impression that you had to get an agreement with the Outer Belt Civic Association in order for us to approve the hours?
Well, it's my understanding that they would make a recommendation of their hours, and then it would be up to the city council to make their own decision on what the hours would be in hand of the approval.
So you are aware that we, that we as a body can make our own recommendation in terms of hours?
Yes. But I didn't want to come here today without any sort of agreement with the neighborhood group, because I've come before without that approval in the years past, and I've been sent away again. You know, I felt that it was important that we find some kind of compromise to come to you with, instead of saying, "You make up the hours."
Even if it put Wes, who is the one who ultimately is, is going to bear the burden of possibly not making enough money to sustain the McDonald's, is going to be at jeopardy? I mean, that...
I mean, it's unfortunate, but sometimes we're asked to reduce our hours. It happens. We want to stay in your community, so we're at your mercy of what you would agree those hours to be.
Thank you.
We still have about 10 minutes left for Counselor Gomez.
Do you own the McDonald's in North Main Street?
No, I don't.
All right, just asking. Now I've got another question. So the corporation made the agreement with the Outer Belt without you, okay? Now, you were under the understanding when you made the agreement with the corporation that you had to stay open 24 hours?
Yes, I have that. That's, that's the franchise agreement.
So if you're not open for 24 hours, are you penalized in any way by the corporation?
I'm not penalized by the corporation. I'm penalized by the absence of the dollars.
No, no, I understand that part. I understand that part. I'm just trying to, because what I'm understanding is that she made the decision, well, I put myself in this pickle today, an executive decision for you as the corporation, so in the end, it penalizes you because they first gave you the agreement and then they rescinded.
Correct.
So what is the reason that they rescinded?
Supposedly that there were disturbance calls to the police department from McDonald's, but not during my tenure. I have never had a call.
So I believe sometimes when the neighborhood board makes a decision that is drastic, when it's to create economic development within communities, we have to understand that there's a lot of dollars that are put to the table. And honestly, you know, there's a McDonald's in my neighborhood that's open for 24 hours a day. There's one in South End that's open 24... 24 hours a day. There's one everywhere, kind of, that I know that's open 24 hours a day. They have breakfast all day. They have lunch all day. You can eat an Egg McMuffin at 1:00 in the afternoon. Jesus, God bless. It's just unfortunate that they rescinded. But for future reference, I believe before you make drastic decisions, whatever municipality that you're going to build in, talk to the franchisee because it put himself in a pickle with the neighborhood council. But remember, some of these neighborhood councils, those individuals, it's an election. So you find community members that are beside you, ward councilors, and try to figure out what's best for you. Honestly, I don't see a reason why you can't be open 24 hours because if there's a McDonald's in my neighborhood open for 24 hours, there should be a McDonald's if it's zoned for that and you need to build and we need to bring in those dollars. I believe that a McDonald's should be open 24 hours, just like any other McDonald's open for 24 hours. If you could open it up in the poorest neighborhood in Massachusetts, we can open it up in one of the richest neighborhoods in Massachusetts. God bless.
Counselor Hearst. The conditions that are as proposed do not list a time limit or a timeframe, and so no motion is needed. We do not need a motion for that. Thank you. Counselor Ash.
Thank you. I guess the... My thought or my concern would be, at the end of it, I would like to have the petitioner and the neighborhood group have another opportunity to sit down and maybe work something out. Give an opportunity to do that. Maybe, or maybe, they can't. But I guess what concerns me is that if there have been serious incidents at the Neighborhood Council, which there have been over the years, there have been probably before your time, very likely that it was, but serious incidents, shootings and so on. So but the bigger issue is that if we know it's in the best interest of that neighborhood and the city to put those regulations in place and put a timeframe that makes sense, then that's what we have to think about, not necessarily where it is or what. But if it's in the best interest of that city, we can't be held hostage to whether, well, you know, somebody can't make money or not. That's not our concern. Our concern is what's in the best interest of that neighborhood. And so I think that's what we have to really give a little bit more thought to and why that agreement was made between McDonald's and that Neighborhood Council. But let's put aside the fact that Wes wasn't there, and let's maybe give him an opportunity to sit down with Walter and his group, and maybe they can come up with something that works for both sides. But again, I don't want to feel like I have to make a decision based on whether or not a petitioner is going to make enough money to operate or not. That shouldn't be our concern. And so I'd like to give them an opportunity to work that out if they can. If not, I'm inclined to support the neighborhood group and the council from that neighborhood who's put a lot of time and effort into this issue. I think that's why we have more representation. If it was someone in Ward 1 or 2 or 5 or 6 or somewhere else, we'd be having the same conversation, and I'd be having the same concerns. So I'd like for them to have an opportunity to sit down and talk. If not, I'm inclined to support the neighborhood.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the contractor, you said that the process has not been done on that point inside. Is this a chance of that happening at all?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. President, what is the next meeting that, if this were to be tabled, could come to the floor?
It would be at the next hearings meeting, which is 27th of February.
Too late.
It's too late.
Too late.
I believe we've already met with the neighborhood several times, and this is the agreement that we've come to.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I believe we've already met with the neighborhood group several times, and these were the best hours that they would agree to with us. I don't think giving this project more time is going to change that negotiation. I mean, Walter's here. He can speak to it, but-
I will say that, I mean, as a Ward 5 counselor, I have, I mean, I share borders with Counselor Allen, and I've had constituents come up to me with the same concerns under here today. And I, tonight, I'm more inclined to, I mean, I will say, support whatever that ward, their neighborhood council states, just for the simple fact that it's their community. It's what they want. This was 16 acres. I mean, it is 16 acres. But if it was my part of the Ward 5, I would feel more inclined to support that decision. And that's what I'm solely based on, is going after what Counselor Ash said, those needs, instead of, I'm sorry, mister, but Wes? Is that what it is? But I mean, this has come before us today, and you're saying this is your first time seeing it? It's a tough position for us. But again, I mean, the community has signed on, and I'm more inclined to support that.
Counselor Bill Williams.
I think we should vote this up or down tonight. And I just hope the body understands what we're voting. You know, when certain business people come down here, they say, "Oh, we want to look out for that guy to help him make money." Other business people come down, then it's a different take. Now, to say you're not concerned about a business person, when you were so concerned about MGM, they gave them a crotch branch. Whatever they wanted, they got. No questions asked, no questions barred. If it's Worthington Street, oh, we got to let it go. This gentleman, just an African-American man, comes down here, owns four McDonald's in the city of Springfield and pays taxes in every single ward in this city. And to treat him as if those hours don't matter, every McDonald's literally in Springfield is 24 hours, okay? The ones that I know. The ones in the North End is 24 hours, the South End is 24 hours, Boston Road and other ones, maybe all or not. But my concern is that you gave him approval. Someone gave him approval. Then someone gets a call from the police department, and I have not seen any police complaints yet. Maybe, Moustache, you're the chairman of self-love and safety, maybe you have some concerns on paper. I have not seen one. The incident you're talking about was when that car pulled into McDonald's. The incident didn't happen at McDonald's. It did not happen. That's disingenuous. It didn't happen there. I know what you're talking about. It didn't happen there. The car ended up going there. We all know that. Until I see a record of some police reports, I don't get a call from the police department saying, "Oh, they got trouble up in McDonald's on Allen Street." Where is the record? Where is the record from the police department about all these calls that this gentleman is saying that I don't have any knowledge of? Now, you Ward guys, if there was so much trouble there, you should have known about it if there was trouble there. You just can't go out on a blank letter saying he had phone calls. Where is the evidence? Maybe Walter Ghul has a pocket of evidence. I don't know. I'm going to vote the... I'm going to follow Mr. Hearst here in terms of establishing the hours, what they should be, level the playing field for this gentleman, make it fair for everyone. If you're going to give MGM 24/7 and worry about their money, which they don't need it, and this businessman who's trying to struggle, make it in Springfield, and all his taxes are up to date, doesn't owe anything, and let me tell you, he's an asset to the neighborhood, a tremendous asset to that neighborhood. On Allen Street, the South End, Boston Road, and oh, by the way, he has one on Page Boulevard, an asset to the city. And to treat him, to drag him through this, there's some business people that come down here, certain names, certain reputations, they get the red carpet. If I had seen something on record, yeah, there's 25 police calls, there's 15. There's nothing on record. What are we basing these police calls upon? Because some police officers, I don't even know who that is, called Walter Ghul and said he has a record? There's no records ever been introduced. It's part of your package. There's nothing here. There's nothing here. I'm along with Counselor Hearst. I think we should go 24 hours, let this man go on and try to make his business work in Springfield.
Counselor Hearst, to your earlier point, although there are no hours of operation listed under the recommended conditions, condition number 17 does state that the hours of operation shall be agreed upon between the petitioner and the Outer Belt Civic Association. And so at the conclusion of the public hearing, I will accept a motion to amend that.
Thank you.
Counselor Edwards.
Actually, I'm waiting for the hearing to continue because at this point, I haven't made a decision which way I want it all. I believe that normally we get 20 minutes of people who are in favor of it and 20 minutes for people against it. And we, as jurors, get to make a determination based on the way the evidence is pointed way or the other. The entirety of this conversation is all been one-sided, in favor and how it came about to get to this conclusion. But we've not heard, not yet, in all this conversation from the Outer Belt Association. I am disappointed that they could not come to some type of balance that would allow, for example, maybe the hours of lobby time being what is stated and then maybe having the drive-up at 24 hours if it was my ward that's supposed to be satisfactory. That may be something that maybe as part of the suggestion could be agreed upon. What I'm hearing from the side that I have heard, because I haven't heard from the civic association side yet, is the corporate is the one who builds the McDonald's. They are the ones who have the timeline to put this together. The owner or franchisee is the guy who will run the place once McDonald's invested the money, and McDonald's Corporation is saying he's in a short... Am I... You understand?
Not correct. No. I pay for the rebuilding of the restaurant. McDonald's makes a small contribution, but I... My take out of this, I walk away owing $3 million.
To be honest with you, I don't want to make a judgment on your money. Whether you make $3 million, you make $300, I'm less concerned with that and more concerned about-
No, that's the investment, not what I make. That's the cost.
I'm less concerned with the investment or the profit and more concerned that the process is done properly. And to this point, we generally give you and your side 20 minutes to give your arguments, and then we allow the other side to give 20 minutes, and we decide how we want to vote on that. We haven't got to the other side yet. Now, since, you know, and I don't want to pick and choose, that's the point, but for you to suggest that you've not made any calls to the police does mean there were no calls to the police because if somebody called... Everybody in this room's got a cell phone. So if a call comes in and they say, "I'm after McDonald's," it may not come from your employees, and it certainly wouldn't come from you because you didn't be there at 2:00 in the morning when the incident was going on, unless... I'm just assuming, as somebody who would be capable of investing $3 million in a project, but the people who would be calling, so the police aren't missing, maybe it's McDonald's. So before we say, if anybody's testimony that we haven't heard yet from their mouth yet that is not accurate and not true, at least like to hear the other side. That's all I'm saying. And as a jurist, as somebody who's supposed to weigh this, I haven't had an opportunity to hear the other 20 minutes of those who are against it. And perhaps laying on the... And I would just finally say, laying on the table may be the best suggestion because what that allows you to do, and maybe a special hearing can be called so that the timeframe can be shortened to satisfy corporate. But as it stands now, I give one vote as the first vote going around the table. If your investment requires a majority of this body here tonight, and you don't have some type of agreement, and it comes down to losing it by one or two votes, neither side is going to be happy because the investment in the neighborhood is lost and your investment in corporate is also lost. So the compromise up to this point is at a point, very shortly, where somebody's going to have to give one way or the other for this to go through. Because as she said earlier, she was here two years ago and it didn't go through. And she's back now two years later. And I don't know you personally, but I know that you've been in business long enough to know that everywhere you've wanted to build, you have been able to build.
I don't care if you're black or white is what I really wanted to say. It's not a racial issue.
And employing as much people as you can. But right to this point, you're risking that it may not go through if you can't get to a more agreeable terms. So I'm suggesting to my colleagues that we probably, we hold off on some more... Allow that portion of the hearing to close, and then allow the other side to speak. And just for the record, yeah, I'm one of those Ward councilors. I'm your counselor in the South End McDonald's, if that's the one you own. And yes, there are police calls there, and it's the one I go to all the time. But I'm ghetto, so I can handle myself better, and I don't necessarily have to call. But it is a call point there, so it would not be a surprise if it was being called from over there. But I'd like to hear the other side's.
Thank you, Counselor. We are still in the proponents' portion of the public hearing. If counselors will hold on to the question, we will soon get to the opponents' portion. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this special permit? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Say again, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this special permit? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Counselor Allen.
Yeah. Mr. President, I just want to make a point. In favor of it is the reduced hours. So let's make sure we get the right-
This is a special permit request, and so those who are speaking in favor are speaking in favor of the special permit. And then in opposition, who will speak in opposition of the special permit.
But the special permit includes... You're saying that the special permit does not include these changed hours? Okay. If that's the case, then fine. Thank you.
So anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Thomas Lott, Springfield, Mass., 207 Forest Park Avenue. I'm in favor of the project because, I mean, obviously now, there's a restaurant there right now called McDonald's, and they are open 24 hours a day. And basically, the owner is going to be rebuilding the same-
Brand new McDonald's.
-McDonald's. So if it's 24 hours now, why would we want to change that? I mean, if we do not approve this permit, then, okay, he's going to be open the way he is now. It's not going to be a new McDonald's, but it's still going to be open 24 hours because he has the right to be open 24 hours now. So basically, he's going to improve an area. He's going to build a brand-new facility. And it's open 24 hours now. It will be open 24 hours later. What's the difference? If you don't approve it, he's still going to operate, you know, with an old, ratty building, but he's still going to be open 24 hours. Thanks.
Thank you.
He's open 24 hours now.
Yeah, but McDonald's one of them.
So anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Terrible.
Seeing none?
Hi, yes. I'm in favor of them adding on to the McDonald's. I haven't heard too much safety issues or concerns, but it was an asset to the community, and I think it would enhance and beautify Springfield with the new casino and everything else going on. But it'll be positive for everybody in the community. And as the counselor said, they make sure they pay their taxes, and it's a positive thing. So it's just improvement.
So anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward.
Walter Ghul, 1336 Allen Street, Springfield. I guess I was speaking in favor, but I guess that's been changed in the last hour. To answer Counselor Bill Williams' questions, first of all, I want to address one thing in particular. Not every McDonald's in the city of Springfield is 24 hours. We did a survey, and if you ask Mr. Powell, his store on Boston Road is not 24 hours. The Boston Road, and I don't have stats in front of me because I was, we thought we were coming down here tonight for a vote that was going to be in favor of everything. But the store at what used to be Haymarket Square across from Eastfield Mall is open until midnight. That's it. Drive-up window and lobby. The store in the square, Mason Square, closes at 11:00. The store that Mr. Powell owns, and he can correct me, but I believe he has a 24-hour drive-up on Friday and Saturday. It's not 24 hours a day. It's not seven days a week. I believe it closes at 1:00 during the week, but I could be wrong. I don't have my stats in front of me. All right. To address the other issue, a vote was taken. Let me first address one thing. We've come before this body many times, and we've come before this body with our paperwork. We don't have stuff in front of us tonight. Do I have the calls for service? Yes, I do. They're sitting in a folder at home because we didn't think we would need them tonight. Calls for service for disturbances, calls for services for ambulance calls, calls were looked at from between 5:00, 12:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., and there were calls for service up there. Mr. Powell wanted to go deeper. He wanted to find out if he could get more information. What calls were? Who made the calls? And I told him, and the association told him, it doesn't matter who made the calls. The point of the matter was somebody made a phone call for the McDonald's on Allen Street for a disturbance. That's what makes the call. All right. Going back to the vote, September 6, we took a vote in favor of the drive-up window. We're not perfect. We're not 100%. Maybe we're a little lax because if you think about it, we haven't been down here for a long time. But we did a call to the deputy's office who handles our area and asked him, "Had there been any calls for service in that area for the McDonald's?" And the McDonald's specifically gave me the address. He sent me a basic, generic situations for calls for service. I called him back. I said, "Can you break this down better?" Like, what was, like, you know, disturbance calls, domestic calls? We're looking at disturbance calls. We're not looking at domestic. We're not looking at domestic, although there were two domestic disturbance calls during those time periods. And he sent it back. I gave it to Mr. Powell, told him what was going on. He again wanted to go further and contact the city. Took him over a month to get information from the city that basically was the same information we had. A vote was made to rescind the vote taken in September and a vote, and then we were talking to Rona, Ms. Murray. A vote was taken in January for new hours. Even Mr. Powell had said at the second meeting he attended, when asked by Mary Dion, "Corporate makes the final decision on the hours, not me." That's what he stated. All right? Again, I don't have that paperwork in front of me because I don't, we weren't ready for that. Long story short, a vote was taken in January, I talked to Rona, she said that she was going to call, she was going to have Paul Silva, who did the presentation tonight, to you, attend the meeting. I asked her about Wes, she said, "No, I'll just have Paul attend the meeting." That's all. I said, "Do you want me to call Wes?" She goes, "No, I'll have Paul attend the meeting." And that's where we are. So that's why Wes was not informed of the final vote in January. Okay? Hearing what I'm hearing tonight, and this is your call because you make the final vote, but if you go by the track record of the Outer Belt Civic Association and the integrity that we've had over the years with this body, okay, I would request to put this in committee to discuss it more, because obviously, corporate and us and obviously the franchisee are not on the same page, which originally we thought we were. So I think at this point, that's probably going to be the best thing to see if something can be ironed out, but in no way, and Counselor Bud Williams, I'm addressing this particular, no way would we deceive Mr. Powell, no way would we deceive this body. We never have, we never will. We have an integrity down here that I think has been pretty reasonable, pretty, I mean, I know Counselor Rook for many years, I'm sure Counselor Rook knows that we would never come down here to deceive you on a vote. In fact, we're shell-shocked sitting there tonight, what we saw, because that's not what we discussed in the driveway, in the hallway. We even brought these hours up and nothing was said to us. And from looks on, Ms. Murray's face looks like she was shell-shocked too. That's why Mr. Powell's not invited to the third meeting. So I just want to let you know that, because I was told she was just going to send Mr. Silva, and that's it.
Counselor Fenton.
I have a question, two questions for you.
Can you just speak up, because the hearing's not what it used to be, so.
All right. Let me see.
Only when Bud yells at.
So right, I was hoping this would come out in testimony, but it has not. What are the hours for the Wendy's that's right next door, serving similar cheeseburgers and french fries?
The hours that were voted on, you mean?
No, no, no. For the Wendy's that's right next door.
The Wendy's closes at one AM.
Okay.
Their lobby closes at ten. The Burger King closes, if you remember, you had just voted on the Burger King receipt for extended hours. Basically, the Burger King's hours are the same that we have voted on for McDonald's hours.
So the Wendy's next door is one o'clock?
One o'clock.
All right.
Drive-up, drive-up one and the lobby closes at ten. The, and the Dunkin' Donuts up there, which you could also consider fast food, closes at ten, drive-up window and the lobby.
Counselor Williams.
Good, Walter. I'm glad I got you stirred up tonight. Getting your old fastball back. You were throwing slow stuff for a while, now you got your fastball back tonight. Just in terms of the questions, was this the last two years, when Mr. Powell's at the store, the last five years on your statistics?
Regarding the calls?
Yeah, police calls.
I believe it was the last three years, counselor.
Well, he's only for two, first of all.
It's a matter of calls were made, right?
Walter, come on.
In fact, if, I want to go back one step.
Well, wait, wait, no, wait, no.
Let me go back one step.
Not yet, Walter.
Three years ago, there was a murder.
Walter.
Up the street, and the murder was thought to be in that drive-up window.
Walter.
Okay? Come to find out, the murder was a block up from there. All right? The thing is, what got me thinking after the sixth of September, a member said to me, "What about that murder, which obviously didn't happen there? In fact, I think there was an arrest made today." All right? What about that murder? What about, what about the concern for safety up there? That's what made me put the call into the deputy's office the next day to find out what was going on with the calls for service up there.
Can I get back to my original thought? I know you're trying to think I lost my thought. He's the manager for the last two, not the last three. So you're going by two years, not three years of statistics. I hope that's clear. You can't blame him.
There's been calls while he's there too, counselor.
You said the last three years. He's been there two years. Can you, can you understand that?
Right.
So, you know, if I'm the manager three years ago, I get fired, I come back two years, it's, I'm not responsible for the two years. So let's go statistic, two years. And the other point is that, what are the hours of operation now?
What's that?
What are the hours of operation now?
Twenty-four hours.
Okay. So let me, let me try to understand.
Only because there's no permit.
Oh, my God. Walter, Mr. President, you got to get some kind of, or can Walter take over your meeting, you know? He's done this for years, Rook. He knows how. So let me understand this. It's a twenty-four-hour McDonald's now, twenty-four hours. The man operates twenty-four hours. He's going to take and build a new McDonald's, state-of-the-art, which they are required to do because corporate makes them. The deal corporate wants, they just want to get the store built. He's got to foot the bill, not corporate. So don't think because he's a millionaire, he walks down, no, he's not a millionaire. So he's going to build a new McDonald's, state-of-the-art, going to invest his hard-earned money. It's twenty-four hours now, oh no, we're going to give him a new McDonald's, which we all know, his operating costs are going up just by basic economics, and I'm not an economic zirb or any stretch of imagination, and you can't allow him to have the same hours of operation with a brand-new McDonald's. It's a twenty-four-hour McDonald's right now. So you're going to reduce his hours of operation? Reduce his hours of op, that's, that doesn't even make, that's not even good economics. That doesn't make sense, Walter. And I know you got blindsided tonight because I got a call and it was in the newspaper. He didn't know, he wasn't at the meeting. It's not your fault. You guys do a great job up there. I've been, we've been going back and forth for fifteen, twenty years now. So all I'm saying now, it just makes good, it's twenty-four hours right now, today. He's going to invest his hard-earned money, a brand-new McDonald's, and we're going to reduce his hours of operation. A state-of-the-art store with a high-profile businessman trying to make it in America, and we say, oh, Springfield's trying to open up, business-friendly and all this, this will send a bad signal to businesspeople here. That's the fact. It's twenty-four hours right now. I'm going to rest my case. It's twenty-four hours now. Why would we reduce it? Why reduce it?
For safety, counselor.
Based upon safety, I still have no facts, there's no statistics, you got a three-year number, probably, I would more suggest, probably a five-year look back instead of a two-year look back. I'm interested what happened under his watch, not the last twenty years there, his watch for the last two years. I think we should vote this up or vote it down tonight, because corporate is nervous there, they want to vote. I think we need to vote it up or vote it down. You know the position, you know the facts. I don't think he's going to yield, they're not going to yield, this body has to make a decision.
I believe there's been two calls for service and he took over the store. And again, I'm not writing myself in, I don't have the paperwork in front of me. Those hours were in the hour frame of twelve AM to five AM. I also believe that the association voted for the safety of the neighborhood. Yes, yes, it's been twenty-four hours all these years, but as we all know, that in the past few years, there's been a lot of problems in twenty-four-hour stores. Twenty-four, in fact, a good example would be the Pride Station in the North End, just recently we had. Let me finish now, counselor. There's been, it was a slashing at the Pride Station at the gas station back, I believe, in October. And Bud Williams, weren't you the same person standing in front of the new Dollar Tree store saying, "Safety for the neighborhood" when they were trying to put up that store? Before the store was built?
That was traffic.
So this is exactly what we're trying to do, protect the neighborhood.
That was traffic. There's nothing to do with this.
Just saying.
Counselor Williams.
Let me say this, you want to bring the Pride up. These McDonald's operators, I know both of them, they operate probably ninety-nine percent, they have a good, clean reputation. The one in the North End, which Dan Asper and his friend runs, they have a twenty-four-hour McDonald's. They have a cop on duty. They've never had an incident there. The one on Liberty and Armory, same technique, he has a police officer. What is it now?
I don't know. It was a security incident.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, they have a police officer. If you want to say, you can be open, have a police officer there, I can go along with that. But these gentlemen are not Pride operators, because McDonald's wouldn't let them be Pride operators. You had an incident like that at McDonald's, they'd probably be gone. There's never been an incident, to my knowledge, of that magnitude at any of the McDonald's in this area that I have ever heard of or seen. So I think you got to base it on his reputation. Yes, I'm worried about him being able to stay in business, yes, I am, to stay in business. It's hard, tough enough for people to be in business in the city. You get a businessman who puts his hard-earned money there, we got to support him.
Well, I just want to say one thing, that my reputation stands here too, and I don't want my reputation built. My, let me finish. I want my reputation built on because he was not called for the last meeting, that was not our idea. We were going to call him, we were told it was all set, that Mr. Silva would be there. Thank you very much.
I agree.
Counselor Gomez.
I just feel that, you know, you have the total right, you know, when it comes to public safety, because you are, you are correct. You know, isolated incidents that are open twenty-four hours a day, things do happen there. But what happened at the Pride, what the neighborhood did was, we sat down with the owner, with the franchisee, the man that owns the place, Bob, and he was really cooperative with us. He hired, we built a public safety plan, just giving you an idea, you know, in case after this situation, this was to arise, something was to happen, they created a public safety plan, like, let's say, Phil's, just to use Outer Belt as a, as the body that, you know, represents the neighborhood, and he hired police during those times, which the twenty-four hours would see more people come in, which would be like a Thursday through Saturday, and they had somebody like a, like a security guard to move people along, in essence. That's just an idea. But I believe that, you know, public safety is always the first, that's something that I, that I've ran off. And, you know, these establishments that are created, what happens if, what happens when you kind of downgrade a facility, then they'll see numbers rise in other locations. And sometimes, you know, when people are up in that neighborhood, it's a disservice. And granted, I'm a total supporter of whatever the neighborhood board wants, those are the people that are elected, and those are the people that represent those constituents, and we really listen to what you guys say. Under the, under the statement though, but I believe that if public safety is the question, have you guys have, because in different neighborhoods where we have these other facilities that my other colleagues had talked about, your neighborhood don't necessarily have a C-three unit, but do you guys have a public safety plan within, you know, your sector with, when it comes to twenty-four-hour establishments? Not that you're aware of? And also, do you think that, Mr. President, this is not even for you, I apologize, Mr. President, on this issue right, right now, that we're particularly talking about, if we, if we were to, if I'm right, if we were to send it to committee, we couldn't do that, right? We'd have to table the manner? And, but then that would risk supposedly corporate saying that they have to put a shovel in the dirt within the next eight weeks? No, 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 I'm just, I'm just asking. I have another question, I think it's for you. No. I don't know who I'm asking this question for, I'm sorry. Can the hours be changed if we vote that they still open, but with these provisions, that Outer Belt, but then in the future, can that petitioner still come in and change the hours to twenty-four hours after they have probably built a public safety plan with the establishment?
The clerk can verify, they would have to come in for a change in their special permit.
So that, so, because you know, sometimes that if they don't get it right there and they have to wait two years or something like that, is that what's going on? Or it doesn't matter for the change?
They can come in for a change of their special permit. If this passes as is, or however we decide to pass it, they could come in for a change for the special permit, hours of operation and their special permit at any time.
All right. Do you, do you believe, sir, that your committee would, would be okay with, obviously, because corporate and you guys agreed upon a certain hours that we have now in front of us, are you guys prepared to visit with the, with the gentleman and talk about a public safety plan, probably for the futures, and then you guys can change the, change the hours in a later date as a provisionary, and then come back to making sure this, this economic structure is not missed, this opportunity? I, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way that you don't miss the opportunity of jobs coming into your neighborhood for young people, but at the same time, I'm still looking at the fact of public safety, that you guys can probably come together at a consensus to figure out which way you, which way we can move forward, because corporate already made the decision for him. We understand that. But are you guys willing to work with the gentleman to make sure that probably in the near future, like six months, a year, before the summer comes, that you guys can create a public safety plan, that he could come here and we could extend those hours twenty-four hours? It's just an idea, I'm just trying to be.
Honestly, counselor, we'd have to go back to our board and ask them. We wouldn't be liable to stand here and say that to you.
No problem.
We'd have to talk to our board and the association members. But, I mean, would that be something we look at? Yes, that could be something we will look at. I mean, you know, like I said, maybe it's time that, because there's so much controversy between three parties now.
Absolutely.
Maybe we need to go to some committee and discuss it and figure it out and go from there, but I, I mean, Mary and I could not answer that question right now, because it wouldn't be fair to the other board members who are not here.
Is the gentleman, is it Wes Powell? May I speak to you, please? Sorry. And this is just a question, you can, you can, I guess, he said, you can keep it real, you know, because I understand the investment is big. Are you willing to agree to the conditions that somebody else made for you, under the, under the provision that the, your project does go on, but willing to meet with the Outer Belt on the provision that you guys can create a public safety plan, that you can come back and open for twenty-four hours? I'm going to be real, it's kind of cold, I know McDonald's, I used to stay up at all times, I was young before, and I'm not saying that everybody wants a hamburger all the time, but, you know, during the winter, I think you guys can have another conversation without missing the opportunity to build and put that shovel in the dirt.
I think that maybe there's a misunderstanding on the whole process of this store being open. We're not talking about opening the restaurant twenty-four hours. We're talking about opening the drive-thru twenty-four hours. There's a big difference.
No, no, of course.
So, and I think that's a reasonable ask. The restaurant is originally open inside and drive-thru twenty-four hours.
So, oh, so the dining area, I can walk in at two in the morning and eat twenty-four hours there?
I changed that.
Okay.
I changed that. Okay? And I changed it and just one called, a storemaid to me and said that about five males somewhere in the age of eighteen and twenty-four walked into the store one night and didn't buy anything and left. And I didn't want to risk anything, so I changed it.
Okay.
So I began to close the lobby at twelve o'clock and then leave the drive-thru open. So the restaurant originally was completely open twenty-four hours. I am now asking to have the restaurant, only the drive-thru open twenty-four hours.
So for this, for your project, this new project, this new McDonald's to open, your McDonald's has to close, so then they can build on top of it, right?
No, we knock it down and build in the same place.
Knock it down and on the same place?
Yes. The same restaurant, we're not doing anything different.
Now, this is a question for corporate. How long is the process to build a new McDonald's?
Ninety days.
Say it again?
90 days.
90 days to build the McDonald's? So, if this was to be approved tonight, when does the shovel go into the dirt, and when is, when it would be done?
We would close on the 13th of March, and then I would start construction on the 1st of April. Actually, it's the 3rd of April, it's a Monday.
So then, we're looking into the end of June, early July, for it to be open?
That's right.
Excuse me, can you step aside? I know you have to go, can I speak to the, the lady and the gentleman from the Outer Belt? In these three months, under the provisions, because they're not going to be open, do you believe in those three months, you guys can have another meeting, so we can push this project forward? So then, by the time he has to open, probably you can have a better understanding and a public safety plan to be in place, so then we can, we can have an agreement to, because at the end of the day, I guess the economic situation is that if she don't put the money, the shovel in the dirt, it's not going to happen this fiscal year. Is that what you're telling us? And I'm trying to, I'm trying to...
Again, Counsel, I can't answer for...
No, I understand, I understand.
I mean, it wouldn't be fair. And again, I would have more people down here tonight if we knew this was going to happen.
If, when's your next meeting?
Is that something, Walter Gould, if there is a way we could sit down with the other board members or with the association and have him come back? Yes. Another idea, and I know Bud Williams is not going to like this idea, but another idea would be to have him open under these new hours and do a six-month review after these hours, to see if there's been any calls for service since then. Because, again, there have been two since, I believe, two since he took over the store two years ago. But that's another idea, too. But I cannot answer, neither can Mary, nor can our Vice President, answer for the association. We're down here tonight, originally supporting this plan.
All right.
Originally supporting the hours of operation, now we find ourselves on the other side of the coin.
All right.
So, I mean, in all fairness, and to keep our integrity, and to keep it this way it's supposed to be, I mean, we could go back to the association and ask them about that. I mean, we could make a special meeting out of it, if we had to, to make a special meeting for him. All right, we already got our meeting for February booked, we already got a March meeting booked, but we could make a special meeting for that.
All right. Mr. President...
May I say something, as I stand here?
You may.
And I'm only saying this because I think it's going to add...
No, I'm listening.
...to, you know, who we are, what we do, and why we do it. Before I do, I'd just like to make mention that, Williams, how long have we known you? How long have we known you?
A long time.
Yeah. How often have you come out and you've worked with us?
I don't know what you mean by that.
You have worked with us.
I've worked with you.
And I think, I think, I think, I just feel very bad right now with the fact, the fact that, I mean, a phone call, or even if you had mentioned something to us out there, that this had come up.
I just found out 15 minutes before the meeting.
Then, we were standing out there. I only wanted to say that, because this is the first time we've been in a situation like this.
I understand, some things happen.
As, as the Outer Belt Civic Association, one of the things that we've done, and we always do, is we work with all of our businesses. And it isn't to take people away, or take them out, or not have them open, it's to do what's best, and what is in the best interest of the people who live in our neighborhood. We go to our businesses, we've gone to all of them, Chili's, Burger King, the laser car wash, McDonald's. We sat for 10 months working with McDonald's, in terms of hours. And sometimes consistency and continuity mean a whole lot to the neighborhood you live in. And with that, none of our businesses are open 24 hours. You want to know why? And I can take you, if you'd like to walk the neighborhood with me, I can take you to all of them. Because we don't have the business. Because we happen to live in a neighborhood that, for the most part, after 9:00 or 10:00 at night, there is nothing going on. Hence the reason why Wendy's isn't open 24 hours, 24/7.
But the McDonald's next door is open.
But the McDonald's next door has always been open.
How many years has that McDonald's been there?
I've been in the neighborhood 40 years, and 40 years ago, when it was built, I was probably one of the first people at the door.
So McDonald's has been there for 40 years?
40 years. 1972, 73, I'm sorry, it's 1973. So, it has nothing to do with the business. What it has to do with is, is that it's the only business that would be open 24 hours a day, 24 hours. And it doesn't go along with the continuity or the safety. And safety, as the years have gone by, have become a bigger issue, and we're always very aware of what's going on, what isn't. It has nothing to do with who our business neighbors are or anything. What it has to do is, that this is our neighborhood, and for the safety purposes of our neighborhood, for traffic, for people coming in, people going out, opening businesses, everybody up there, including our Dairy Mart's and everybody else, they close down 10, 11, 12 o'clock, because there is no business between 12 and 5, 6 o'clock in the morning.
Thank you.
That's the reason why we do what we do.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'm sorry, can I just mention one other thing? The Wendy's and the McDonald's right now have no special permits. Because when they were built, we had no special permits for drive-up windows. So Wendy's actually could open up 24 hours a day, and there's nothing that the neighborhood body or this body could do, because it's under no special permit. All right? Because this store is being brought down and being rebuilt, that gave the neighborhood a chance to speak out about the drive-up window, about the concern for safety in the neighborhood. So I just want to make that fact, that Wendy's could open 24 hours a day, but they elect not to. So I just want to point that out, because they don't have a permit.
Thank you.
Counsel Marcus Williams.
I just want to provide a point of reference for any future franchisees or developers looking to establish business in the city of Springfield. It is your job and your responsibility to lobby your counselors. I don't care if you're black, white, it does not matter, it's not a racial issue. So therefore, Mr. West, with all due respect, when you got up here and gave your presentation, I got the impression that the neighborhood council was behind you. And I don't know if I was the only one with that impression, but that's the impression that I got. But it changed, and it changed when others were advocating for you, sir. And I feel that if you were going to advocate for what you want, as a business owner and a franchisee, then you have to do that from the beginning, because that is, in my mind, not consistent behavior. So therefore, I just want to leave that on the floor for you.
I missed the first part of your...
My point, I was providing a point of reference for developers and people like yourselves who have business in the city of Springfield. When you want something done, and you're coming to this body seeking some type of approval, you have to do your job and lobby the counselors. And what that means is, making phone calls to us, to tell us, this is what you want and why you want it. When you came up here today, I got the impression that the neighborhood council had already decided, and you were in favor of what they wanted. But that changed at the drop of a dime, and I, for me, I have an issue with that. So I'm just saying, moving forward, and you've been, you know, a taxpayer in the city of Springfield and all that great stuff, and we, I applaud you for that. But in making your decisions for your business, and how you would like that to look, you have to do a little bit more due diligence on your part, is how I feel, okay? I just wanted to give you that.
I'm not sure what I did wrong, or what I, what I should have done differently. Because I worked with the neighborhood, I attended the first two meetings. I was not invited to the third.
The follow-up is important, too, you know? I mean, if you, this is a multi-billion dollar investment that you're going to have in the city of Springfield, you got to see what the plans are, how they're going to fall through, you know? It's, because it puts us in a tight position, when you're here now advocating for something that does not look like what we had originally intended. And that's what I'm saying, is that I'm not understanding that differential, and I'm not, it has not become clear to me yet. So I'm saying, if you want something future, in the future, from us, do a little bit more due diligence on your part, to make it happen, is all I'm asking.
Well, I've never had to dealt with the process before, this is my first time doing a rebuild in Springfield, and I'm not familiar with what all the steps are. But, but there is a lot of emails being sent out, asking for information, and I never got anything, so it's pretty hard for me to, you know, participate in something when I don't know that it is taking place. Every meeting that I was invited to, and I talked to Walter several times, and, you know, and I did exactly as I was asked.
Mr. West, I've been saying that the impression I got when he first introduced the vote tonight is different than how...
I understand, as if I didn't do anything, I got you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the opposition has now exhausted their time. Let go allow for a five-minute rebuttal. The proponents, is there anyone who would like to rebut in favor of the special permit? Please step forward.
Again, Thomas Lot, 207 Forest Park Avenue. It seems to me that the petitioner, the person has already made a concession, they had a 24-hour operation, that they were open all the time, and now he made a decision to close his lobby at 12 o'clock. So now he's only asking that the drive-thru be permitted to be open 24 hours. And the, and the opposition, earlier, they mentioned that there have been two calls in the last two years. That's miniscule. To me, that's excellent, if there's only been two calls. And, and to combat what Counselor Gomez said, Counselor Gomez proposed that, okay, maybe we can go ahead and approve them for the, you know, for the, for the 12 o'clock, for the 12 o'clock close, and then come back later, and based on what happens, you know, if there are any phone calls coming in, you know, with interruptions or something like that. Who's to say that if we go ahead and approve the proposal tonight, just for that, just for the 12 o'clock close, and then, and then waiting to see what happens? Who's to say that someone that, I mean vehemently opposes this situation, this operation, is going to make phone calls just to, just to go on record that phone calls were made, you know, to the police department? I mean, people do that. So I would say that we go ahead and we, you know, place a vote to approve the proposal to be open for the drive-thru for 24 hours. He's making a concession, you're getting more than you had, the store was open 24 hours for everything. Now he's only proposing the drive-thru.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? You have five minutes. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm, I'm just speaking for the young kids and the other businesses that has, I was born here in Springfield, and it was, you know, it's a great, it's a nice city, and there was a lot of stuff going down on Main Street, but there's a lot of businesses that has left here. So it has changed throughout the years that I've been back up here. Now Macy has left, Sears has left, and now they want to reduce McDonald's down to their hours. Well, I'm thinking about the young kids, but I'm thinking about, this is an asset, like they said, for money for the community, and there's people that can eat. I, it's a, it's not open, like the gentleman said, the lobby's not open, it's a window, it's a window. But there's too many businesses that are leaving Springfield, and I don't want it to be like a ghost town. And I'm advocating for people shop at Eastfield Mall, shop at Eastfield Mall, more, because businesses are leaving Springfield. And I, and I think for the people that are not here in the community, it's going to be a negative if they reduce the hours. Maybe, you know, they don't be out all times at night, but there are 24-hour businesses, CNS and the medical field, that probably needs to eat certain times at night, and the homeless, and the shelters, but I don't know, there's too many businesses that are being reduced or leaving Springfield. We need to keep something. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any final questions before we close the public hearing? Counsel Rook.
I just had a question to the petitioner or to the construction manager. How much revenue would be lost between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM?
That would be about 15% of the revenue that we would lose.
That's only at the drive-up window, because the lobby would still remain closed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And what is, I want to ask you to disclose your public numbers.
Any final questions from the council? For Counsel Gomez.
I just feel like that we can apply a restriction after they're open, to put a police officer there, because it seems that the biggest situation here is the public safety, and I've seen it decrease, even and deter people, you know, because you guys did bring up the situation that happened at The Pride. Once we, the neighborhood board implied and created that structure, and put the police, the police car there, it drove the people, like, by a phenomenal number. Now that place is very well-controlled, and now they don't have to hire the police officer, they have a security guard. I just feel that with a restriction, it would help, and it would benefit the neighborhood. And I just propose that they have a restriction, I mean, a restriction to have a police officer there from the hours of 11:00 to 5:00, if that's the will of the council. If not, then I don't know if I can support it going 24 hours, just because I want to make sure that the neighborhood feels safe, which is basically the main idea here. Thank you.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I need a point of clarification. I'm getting the impression, I personally feel that this committee, because there's so much disagreement here, and I don't really think that if you don't have the regulations when you pass the special permit, they're not going to be put in. So I think they all have to be put in at the same time. But did you say that this could not be referred to committee, it had to be laid on the table? Why can't it be referred to committee?
This is a special permit hearing. Technically, the special, the subcommittee cannot basically revisit the hearing. The hearing has to be before the body that is hearing the item. If a special, if a, if a subcommittee were to meet on it, they technically wouldn't be meeting on the special permit.
So if we want to have further discussions on this and not vote on it tonight, what's the avenue?
The avenue would be to continue the matter or lay it on the table. A, a, a subcommittee could meet on, let's say, the McDonald's at the address, however, they would not technically be meeting on this special permit.
And a motion to continue the matter has to be made before the hearings close, or after the hearings close?
A motion to continue, to continue the, the hearing could happen at any point, it could happen while you're accepting testimony, it could happen after a public comment has closed, it can happen during the discussion between the counselors.
Well, you know, there are a lot of good people that came down here, and depending on what happens with the vote, they're all going to be affected. And, you know, I, the neighborhood council's working out for the neighborhood council. I can't believe that, actually, I'm really surprised that corporate leaves their franchisees out to hang. That really amazes me, that there's no consideration for the person who owns it. I don't want to see this die, I'm not convinced that there's enough support here on the council floor for this to pass, so I would like to continue it at the appropriate time.
Any final questions from the council? Counsel Hurst.
I'd like to make a motion to amend condition number 17, to have the drive-thru open for 24 hours.
Okay, we'll entertain that motion once the hearing is closed. Any final questions from the council? Counselor Williams.
Just, Mr. President, that means, going off of what Counselor Walsh said, that means a special meeting will have to be scheduled alongside that motion, correct? You said eight, eight, you said the next meeting, she said that's not going to be, that could derail the plan, so will a special meeting have to take place for this conversation to continue?
If this matter is continued, the next date that it can be heard is on the, in February 27th, unless we set a special meeting prior to.
But you can set a special meeting anytime.
Counsel Allen.
Just to make sure we don't kind of mess up and not, and not to, not follow what just happened, Counselor Walsh just said she'd like to continue it, and Counselor Hurst then made a motion to amend it. What's the order here, and how do we, if we are going to continue it?
The order is ladies first.
Was there a motion? Was there a motion made?
It was not in the form of a motion.
I said at the appropriate time, I would make it.
So what's the order of adding order?
So we will, the public hearing is still open, I'm asking for final questions, because once the public hearing is closed, we will no longer be able to accept new evidence. And so once the hearing is closed, we will not be able to ask questions from the petitioner or the opponents.
It all depends on who the president recognizes.
So right now, I'm asking if there are any final questions. At the conclusion of that, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for final comments or additional motions.
But I'm just, that's what I'm getting at, is, are you going to close the public hearing? She says she's going to make a motion to continue it.
She can, she can make that motion prior to closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. President, just had one last question to the petitioner. Mr. West, my colleague Counselor Gomez had suggested hiring a police officer for an extra detail. I think he said between the hours of 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Would you be opposed to that, or would you...
For the drive-thru?
To have on the premise?
Or for the inside of the restaurant?
In the parking lot, I guess, in a cruiser? I, the concern is public safety. Are you willing to address or take steps to address the concerns of the neighborhood?
Of course.
Okay, all right. And would you be in favor of a six-month review, special permit being granted for 24 hours, and we come back in and review this and find out if conditions have improved, or if they've continued to be a problem for the neighborhood?
Yes, I would be.
Thank you.
Counsel Walsh.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh. Is there a second?
No, you just said not to.
The counselor can make a motion to continue the matter prior to the hearing closing. At the next meeting, if the, if the motion is made prior to the hearing closing, then we will be able to accept new evidence at the next hearing. We will, we will be able to ask question, additional questions at the next hearing. However, if we make the motion af- However, if we make the motion after the public hearing is closed, we will not be able to ask questions at the next hearing.
Oh, so you have to do it before. That's what the neighborhood council said.
Counsel Edwards on the...
Committee, because they were surprised tonight.
I'm not a big fan of special permits, but I understand the value of them. What I would suggest to my colleagues is that I believe this council does have a committee that is supposed to review special permits and the granting of them. And I know in my neighborhood, I've got a business that's been operating in violation of Department Environmental Protection for at least 20 years, and code enforcement doesn't even, they just don't even bother anymore. But I'm just going to suggest to you that whatever we pass, even if we pass the 24-hours drive-up or what have you, we have the right at any point in the future, because this is being granted as a special permit, if and in fact that is our choice to do, we can call them in a week after the permit is granted, because there's been a violation of that special permit. And at any time in the future, we want to recall them in for review of their special permit, we can do that. But I have been on the council for seven years, and I don't remember many occasions where we've called in any business for violation. We've heard in testimony about businesses that are coming in for an amendment to their special permit, or a transfer of their special permit, or asking for a new special permit, and heard testimony about their past violations, and we've taken that into account. So what I'm going to suggest and remind my colleagues is that however you choose to vote on this, if three weeks, six months down the road, if this is, we grant a permit that allows them to be open 24 hours a day, and there's a major incident that occurs there, or a series of minor incidences that bring concern to the neighborhood council, we as a body have a right, and I believe there's a committee that oversees special permits, to call this businessman or this franchisee in, and we can revoke his special permit. The difference is, as he's operating and has operated all these years, is that he can, as they said with Wendy's, he didn't have, we didn't have that oversight because he wasn't operating under a special permit. What happens moving forward, this different today, is that if we grant this in whatever form that we choose to do it, we didn't have the authority to call him in at any time, not just for code violations, not just for any other type of violation, but from complaints from the neighborhood, or from the recommendations of the police department that there has been incidences occurring there. So that's the tool at a club that we have to use if you choose to vote however you vote. But please recommend, know that whether the lobby is open or closed at 10 o'clock, whether they have a 24-hour drive-up, the fact that we're granting him a special permit to build a new building gives us this future oversight of everything that occurs there, and at any point in the future, we can call him back in. Thank you.
There was a motion made by Counsel Walsh. I believe there was a second. Counsel Allen, to continue the matter? Is that correct? Was that your motion?
Yes. Thank you.
All those in favor of continuing this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it?
Are you sure? I'm in doubt.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
And a motion to continue would be yes, correct?
This is on granting the motion to continue this item to the next city council meeting. A yes vote is to continue the matter, a no vote is to keep the matter here for further discussion. Counselor Edwards?
No.
No. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook?
No.
No. Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ash? Yes. Counsel Twigs?
No.
No. Counsel Shea, absent. Counsel Fenton?
Abstain.
Abstained. Counselor Hurst? No. Counsel Bud Williams? No. Counsel Ramos?
No.
The motion fails.
Mr. President?
Counsel Rook and then Counsel Williams.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we add two restrictions to the recommended conditions, or two conditions to the... One would be that there be a six-month review, and the second motion that my colleague had made, which would be that a Springfield police officer be assigned an extra detail from 11:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. Friday through Saturday? Thank you.
Okay, we will entertain that motion at the conclusion of the hearing. Are there any final questions from the counsel? Counsel Hurst.
I just wonder how necessary an extra detail is for one call a year. I just think before we commit or commit the owner to something like that, it seems to me like we should have a little bit more evidence in terms of whether that indeed is necessary. For one complaint a year, we're going to have a cop on duty for, I don't know how many hours it is, but it just seems very onerous.
Before we close the public hearing, are there any final questions for the petitioner or the opponents? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, and I will now accept motions for... Counsel Hurst had a motion prior to that.
I'd like to make a motion to amend section 17, to leave hours of operation, drive-through for 24 hours, with Counsel Rook's first provision, a six-month review. After the six-month, after the six-month review, seems to me after six months, a cop is necessary.
Friendly amendment to amend the extra detail to six months?
Second motion.
Motion made by Counsel Hurst, seconded by Counsel Edwards. All those in favor of the amendments, say aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it? Mr. Clerk, roll call on the special permit as amended.
On granting the special permit, which is item number two on tonight's agenda, with the amendment that the hours of operation be open 24 hours a day for a six-month period for a review, was it before the neighborhood council?
24 hours, six months, longer review before they come back in the day.
Before the city council.
And the neighborhood council.
And the neighborhood council. A yes vote is in favor of granting the special permit, a no vote is a denial. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
What happened to the police detail? Where did that land?
I don't believe the police detail was a part of the motion.
Okay. No.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
No.
No. Counsel Marcus Williams?
No.
No. Counsel Ash? No. Counsel Twigs?
Here.
Yes. Counsel Shea, absent. Counsel Fenton?
Abstain.
Abstain. Counsel Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Bud Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Insufficient, matter of fact.
Not sufficient. Special permit is not granted. Special permits, they will not be able to come back for a special permit for two years. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct.
That is why I wanted it to be continued. Remember, I told you that I didn't think there was enough support for it?
Counselors, the time now is 9:42. We still have four special permits to review tonight. In the interest of time, if we can wait for the proponents and opponents to testify prior to asking questions, at the conclusion of the testimony, I will ask for questions, if there are any questions of the petitioners or anyone who has spoke during the hearing, then I will close the public hearing and I will ask for final comments. Item number three, Mr. Clerk.
Item number three is an application for a special permit to allow the installation of a wall sign. Yes.
The specific site is not an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use, as developed, will adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will not be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of finding.
Item number three, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, it's just the items of the collection.
Item number three is an application for a special permit to allow the installation of a wall sign above the first floor of the property known as 1610 Main Street.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Edivelto Flores, 42, I water terrace, Springfield, Massachusetts. I'm here as president of the New England Fan Workers Council, and this is the sign that we have in. Next to me is my good friend Andy Yeas, and we are very supportive of this. One of the things that we, a little thing that we have in the fort is, this, him and Peter Pennelli came and helped this institution that was alive for 75 years. It was going to close, and by different discussion, they kept that institution, which is now close to 80 years alive, and we've been discussing for a while to do some work. If you have been into the fort lately, they have put over a million dollars in the whole structure. So that's a commitment to the city already. And if you went there last week for the Christmas holiday, went from 12 days to 20 days, and it was great. But one of the things that we, there's a little thing that we have in the fort that the building is owned by a Puerto Rican entity. The restaurant is owned by Italian-American, and the person in charge of the food is a Chinese-American, and we sell German food. This is America, and you cannot get any better than that. So what we're doing with the sign, if you look, if you look at there, they have like a little sign. So Andy and Peter have been talking to about making investment, more investment, Springfield make it. This is a five-star restaurant. I don't know if you realize that, but I think this is a five-star restaurant. I go to other places in Boston, and they talk about this place. They come to, people that come to convention, they come to the fort, and they love it. So one of the things is that we are improving there, and when Andy was talking about it, we decided to do the whole, go through the whole process, go through the every, we have talked to many of you, we have talked to the Sonny Bo, the mayor, we have talked to everybody else. Finally, they say, shut up, just bring something to us. So this is what we have, it's a nice, and it's a nice soft in the building, if you see it. The only thing is that, and Andy's going to talk about it more specifically, but there was one little section that it was recommended to you that we don't put any other sign in top of the second floor, so here that. At the present time, we had the state lottery, the Massachusetts Commonwealth, which make $5 billion for the Commonwealth, and that money come back to the city. They have a little sign up there, the Mass Lottery, and I think in the restriction, they wanted to put a restriction, not to put anything else there, so we already have a Massachusetts lottery sign up there. We have talked to the commissioner, we don't know if he wanted to put something like a little with lights or something like that, so that's something else that today, when you come up, not to put any restriction, we already have a sign up there, in term of there. This building is a historical site, building, and we respect, I do respect historical buildings. So we doing it with taste, soft, and if, this year, we did the October 1st, and the parking lot and everything was nice, and everybody enjoyed the structure. So again, Andy is going to speak.
Good evening, Mr. President. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, counselors. My name is Andy Yeas, and I'm Nate Fort Street in Springfield, Mass., and I've been in the restaurant business with my family nearly all my life. I was called to do this duty here with her, excuse me, our good friend Peter Pennelli. When this restaurant was announced to close down three years ago, the call came through. My family and I were eager to the task. As most of you know, we own several eateries around the Commonwealth, particularly here in Pioneer Valley, and this makes us, this particular unit, our eighth unit. We're particularly proud to be here in Springfield. I can tell you that every day I walk through those doors. As a customer of this restaurant for 35 years myself, I am extremely proud to walk through there as a owner and part ownership of this particular brand. What a shame if this restaurant were to close, a landmark restaurant here in Springfield, Massachusetts, also known throughout the country in the United States, also known as the 21st restaurant recognized in the Forum of the United States. We simply want to fashion a sign for directional purposes. We're bringing more people to Springfield, people to say, where is 8 Fort Street? So we want to indicate to these people, we are here. I can proudly say to you, since our tenure for three years at Fort Street, we have turned this restaurant profitable. Therefore, I am proud to say that we are seeing a lot new faces complementing by the old faces of the student Prince and Ford Restaurant. I'm very, very proud of that. With your vote here this evening, ladies and gentlemen, we want to magnify the traffic to come down to Springfield. We know we have an entity called MGM that's ready to start to awake, as I call the gorillas ready to wake up. We want to augment them, and we want to make sure that we can share Main Street together and coexist very well together. I hope you consider our recommendation and our application here this evening. I thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be delighted to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Say again, is there anyone wanting to speak in favor? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please step forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing, close this portion of the hearing. Any questions for the petitioner? Counsel Rook.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to strike item number six from the conditions.
We will entertain that motion at the conclusion of the hearing. Any final questions for the petitioner? Counsel Twigs.
I was going to do the same thing. I make a motion that we approve it, the special permit.
Any final questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, I will now close the hearing. There's a motion made by Counsel Rook to strike...
Item number six, Mr. President.
Seconded by Counsel Fenton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Any final comments from the counsel? Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very happy to support this tonight, and I think it's wonderful that we have this establishment in the city of Springfield. So many families were upset when it was going to close, it was like a wake there, and the fact that you have brought it back and you now need some assistance from us to make sure that people know where the fort is. You know, I'm a great believer in signs, digital signs, all kinds of signs. People want to know where they're going, nobody wants to get lost. I mean, having, if that there will help you increase your business, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I hope there's unanimous support. These are gentlemen that have invested in the city for a long time, and they are taxpayers here in the city of Springfield, and I think we have to be favorable to businesses that live and work here.
Thank you. Counsel Fenton.
Mr. President, just very briefly, I want to thank Mr. Yeas and Mr. Flores for their patience with us tonight and for preserving this Springfield institution for future generations. As with everything that they've done down here, this sign is a class act. It's top-notch, consistent with the historic nature of the building, and look forward to approving it tonight.
Any other final comments from the counsel? Counsel Williams.
I'd also like to rise in favor of this signage. I know, Herbie, I gave you a hard time last time with that Red, was it Red Max or what was the name of the business? But this is more classic, it certainly keeps up with the feel of the downtown district, so.
It will help the Springfield Cultural District too with signage.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk? As amended?
On granting the amended special permit, a yes vote is to grant the special permit, no vote is to... Counselor Edwards? Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ash? Yes. Counsel Twigs? Yes. Counsel Shea, absent. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst? Yes. Counsel Bud Williams? Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
More than sufficient, but special permit is approved. Counsel Edwards on the reasons.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, thank you, board.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use, as developed, will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision, the basis of the findings.
All those in favor, step in the reason, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, Mr. Clerk. Item number four is an application for a special permit for motor vehicle rentals at the property known as 88 Bernie Avenue. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Blair. My address is 243 Cold Spring Avenue, West Springfield, Massachusetts.
Counsel Edwards.
I'd like to make a motion, we table this, and allow this gentleman and applicant to meet with the neighborhood council.
Second.
This is number eight.
Motion made by Counsel Edwards, seconded by Counsel Fenton.
I'm sorry, I'm going to leave this with him. I'm sorry, it's mine.
Motion withdrawn? Counsel Fenton.
Then I make a motion, Mr. President, that we table this matter, just not necessarily in light of the fact that neighborhood council notice may or may not have been given, but just because of the fact that this is a pretty strategic area in the Memorial Square District of the city, and I have a variety of questions for the applicant. So before I get into them, I'd like to make a motion that we continue.
Motion made by Counsel Fenton, is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Twigs. All those in favor, say aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk. On Counselor Fenton's motion to table the item, a yes vote is, will table it until the next meeting, a no vote will continue the discussion. Counselor Edwards. Yes, Counsel Allen.
No.
No, Counsel Rook.
No.
No, Counsel Gomez.
No.
No, Counsel Walsh.
No.
No, Counsel Marcus Williams.
No.
No, Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs.
No.
No, Counsel Shay Ebsen. Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
No.
No, Counsel Bud Williams. No, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Not sufficient? You can continue.
So we're here before the board tonight for the request for a special use permit for the property 88 Bernie Avenue to allow motor vehicle rentals. It was currently the final markdown, it's now a vacant building. The proposal will be to do self-storage on the interior of the building, and as an accessory used to rent motor vehicles.
Is there anything else you would like to say for the record?
We had met with the council before, the neighboring council, and they did support the use of, or the special use permit.
Counsel Gomez.
Are you guys going to be renting U-Hauls there too?
Yes, this would be for U-Haul rentals.
For U-Haul rentals?
Yes, sir.
When you say motor vehicle, it sounds like it's going to be renting Enterprise. Just want to clarify.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this special permit request? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Say again, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor for this special permit request? Please step forward. Seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this special permit request? Please step forward. Say again, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this special permit? Please step forward. Seeing none, I will close this portion of the hearing. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Counsel Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir, I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself again, just so I can get your name for the record?
Jim Blair.
Okay. And what company are you with?
I'm the marketing company president of U-Haul of Western Mass, Vermont, New Hampshire, and I'm representing American Realty.
Who is Richard Bonavita and Carol Slate? Who are they?
I, sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
Richard Bonavita and Carol Slate, the 8890 Bernie Ave Realty Trust.
I'm John Bonavita, I reside at 26 Autumn Ridge in East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. My partner's name is Richard Crowley.
Richard Crowley.
So I believe that's a, I believe that's a misprint.
And Carlos Vizcara?
He's the president of Jim's company, I believe.
Yes, Carlos is the president of American Real Estate.
Okay, so tell me a little bit more about what you intend to be renting at this site. It's a big site.
It would be indoor self-storage units, and what we're here for tonight, the special use permit, will be to rent U-Haul equipment.
Okay. So maybe this question's more appropriate for you, Mr. Bonavita. This council approved a pretty complicated land swap several months ago that I believe was concerning this particular parcel in the Horana School, providing for additional frontage for this parcel. Isn't that correct, or am I misrecollecting here?
There was, there was a vote before, it was never finalized, and there was a land swap, the property behind the Horana School for a piece of property adjacent to our property now on the final markdown.
So is this proposal a part of that land swap?
No.
What do you intend to do with that parcel?
No, that, that particular land swap has, has all been dissolved as of six months ago through the Law Department here in Springfield.
So anybody here from the Law Department, Tashina or Attorney Davis, can you speak to that?
That's not part of this parcel.
I told you guys I had some questions, unfortunately.
I wouldn't be able to speak to that tonight, but I can definitely look into it and get back to the council on that.
Mr. Bonavita, maybe you could tell us a little bit more then, without the Law Department to indulge us. What was the reason for the dissolution of that land swap?
The reason for, when we brought this property to market two years ago, we, we, that proposal that came before the city council here in Springfield and the land swap proposal was based on a settlement of a lawsuit, one of my partners, Carol Slate.
Yes.
Where there were several, there were several hundred thousand dollars owed to Carol Slate because of the cleanup of the bakery that was on the school site on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Allegedly, right.
I believe it was somewhere in the vicinity of $300,000 was owed to our partner. We came to an idea that the front parcel may be worth more to us, that's adjacent to our property, had more frontage along Bernie Avenue, and the rear parcel might be worth quite a bit to the school department to provide, you know, things for the children, the 70 feet behind the school. We thought that maybe that land swap would work, could dissolve, in addition to just the land swap, it was a dissolving of the $300,000 suit against, it wasn't a suit, it was a settlement. She had the money coming. Well, the city never paid the money. So as, 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 as part of that settlement, we would do a land swap. Well, that was seven and a half years ago, and it never, it never came to fruition. The land swap, there was a study, it had to go before the Park Department.
This council approved a land swap less than six months ago.
No, 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 I'm talking about from the initiation. I'm not talking about when it came here.
I see.
I'm talking about from, from the initial.
So what went wrong from when you had an agreed to?
I can explain it.
Land swap with the Law Department and the entity that owned it, and this council approved?
I can explain exactly what went wrong. When, 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 when the land, the land swap which was proposed by us to settle the suit, when, when we started getting interest in the property, okay, we were afraid that that, that that swap was going to deter from a sale of the property. Steve Silverman, our attorney, went to Ed Bakula, said, you know, it's been several years, and, you know, you know, we'd like to, you know, we'd like to pass on that. And he said, well, okay, and entered into an agreement with the city to, instead of the several hundred thousand dollars, said, I believe that, I believe that Mrs. Slate has been compensated, is going to be compensated, was compensated $20,000 a year for, for two or three years to settle that debt of the city of Springfield to the Slate family. Now, not only, not only did, not only did we disavow, take away the land swap, the city of Springfield was able to settle that several hundred thousand dollar judgment from the Slates for tens of thousands of dollars.
Counselors, without the Law Department to advise us here with respect to the actual terms of the settlement that the city apparently had in place when they asked us to authorize this land swap six months ago, none of which was disclosed to this body at the time that we approved that land swap, I might add, I don't feel we have sufficient information to act here tonight. So in light of that, I will again make a motion that we continue the matter and hope that this testimony has revealed the merits of it this time.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Fenton, seconded by Counsel Williams. Counsel Walsh on the motion.
Well, I don't understand if, are we talking about the land swap affecting what we're voting on tonight? Are they two separate issues?
To me, they're two entirely related issues, because the terms of the land swap that this body was briefed on somewhere around six months ago were that it would provide additional frontage for the marketability of this property in exchange for the city receiving attractive land, which was already planned for improvements to the outdoor programs at the Horana School, including community garden. So to learn that that swap has been scrapped and that we now have a plan for storage units, rental storage units being proposed on the site, the two things to me are very related, and I'd like to have the Law Department explain to us exactly why it is that that land swap fell through from the city's perspective.
Isn't the, the, I know where the final markdown is, I know where Horana School is, isn't the improvement for Horana School behind Horana School, or is it on the final markdown property?
My, well, my understanding is that it was behind the final markdown property in a contiguous parcel with the Horana School. So that was, again, my understanding, but I can't speak to it anymore without getting advice from the Law Department.
I.
Can, can you explain to me where this, are we talking about the same thing here? Where the property is and what this is?
We're talking about, we're talking about a land swap, that, that, a land swap that did not occur. There, there is no deal. The deal, the deal was agreed to by the city of Springfield and by us not to do the land swap.
There is no land swap.
I'm sorry?
There is no.
There is no land swap. And if I, if I, if I knew that this question was going to come up this evening, I would have brought you in writing from Ed Bakula, the agreement that is signed from the city of Springfield. In addition to that, you asked, you know, and again, I want to reiterate, the city of Springfield came up on the winning end of the agreement. We, the reason that we wanted out of the land swap was just so we would not get into the situation that we were into right now, so there wouldn't be a cloud over this property. It was several years when we suggested the land swap. It wasn't, it wasn't a product of the city of Springfield, it was our suggestion to do the land swap. And the reason that we opted out of the land swap is just so, for the reason that we wouldn't have a cloud over this, as, 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 for this reason. The land swap is, the land swap has been disavowed, the settlement has been made, and it's been signed by Ed Bakula and agreed to by Ed Bakula after several years. It was the inability of the city of Springfield to pay the settlement and then, and then, and then act in a timely fashion on the land swap, which was several years. That's, and when we, when the final markdown did move out, and we realized we had to sell the property, that's what caused us to say, hey, this thing has been floating out there for all these years, let's, let's see if we can, let's see if we can, let's see if we can disavow the land swap, so there won't be a cloud over the property, and that's what we did.
So I have a question, I have two questions, actually. You had a deal with the city of Springfield, you had a settlement, you reached a settlement, but the city didn't pay the settlement?
That's years ago.
Sir, if you can, please speak into the microphone.
I can't hear so well.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
You had a, you had a settlement with the city that the city did not honor?
Absolutely. To, to the Slate, to the Slate family.
And that's what I want to learn more about.
Well, I can, I can tell you that the agreement is signed, sealed, and done with the Law Department, just so we wouldn't have an issue like this this evening. That's why we did it. And, and I may also suggest, because just like everyone else, I've been sitting here for three or four hours, and, and, and if you, if you'd like to consider this this evening, and, and, and I know most of the people in this chamber predicated upon what I'm telling you to be true, because there's absolutely no reason to delay a vote this evening on account of this.
We're certainly learning a lot tonight about the way businesses operate. I would like to say that I'm really sorry to see the final markdown go, and I always went there, I thought it was a wonderful business, and I am disappointed that they, that they left Springfield. I don't know what their reasons were.
So motion on the floor to continue the matter, to table the matter? Seconded by Counsel Williams.
I don't want to table it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Marcus Williams. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Table it.
To table the matter.
I thought we voted for that. This is the second one?
This is a new, this is a new motion.
But the first one didn't pass.
The first one didn't pass after some testimony. Counsel Fenton made another motion to table the matter.
This is my second motion to table, I'm bringing it up simply, councilors, because the Law Department told us one story, the applicant told us one story when they were in here six months ago, and now seems like something happened in the interim. This council authorized a land swap, not knowing it was the result of a settlement pending judicial action. The Law Department, as the testimony is being provided here today, has apparently undone that land swap that we approved that was agreed to, and it's going to have an impact on Horana and the kids at that school, and this site, and its marketability. And for that reason, I think that the Law Department should be here to advise us on why they did that, that's all.
Counsel Walsh on the motion.
Mr. President, you know, when we have things come before us, we find out whether or not people have paid their taxes, and, and you know, there's due diligence, I think if there's a problem, the Law Department should have let us know before this came before us. I think there's some issue here with the Law Department not keeping us informed. This is a businessman who is completely trustworthy and honest, and I believe him.
Excuse me, can I, can I?
There's a motion on the floor.
Can I?
Motion made.
Can I please?
Sir, we're discussing our motion. There's a motion on the floor to table this matter. All those in favor?
Just on the motion?
Counsel Williams, on the motion.
I'm just confused, this body voted for an action with the Law Department for a land swap. This body voted for a land swap. There's no way the Law Department can undo what we, without coming back before, it's just, I don't understand, I don't know what's going on in this city, I really don't. We voted for the land swap for Horana. Now they're saying, the Law Department said, we're going to undo what the council voted to do in this body? Way beyond my comprehension. I mean, how does that happen?
The Law Department should have let us know.
Counsel Rook on the motion.
Mr. President, just a point of information, is there a way to delay? I know Counsel Fenton would like to lay this on the table until we can get the legal opinion offered by the petitioner?
That is Counsel Fenton's motion.
Okay. Counsel Rook, so you're asking if we can wait on entertaining the motion to continue until we get the legal opinion? I mean, my, what I'm interested in is hearing from the Law Department and whoever authorized undoing that land swap, and why, and how, if at all, it impacts this proposal.
If, if, if I may, the land swap was never done. There were final approvals from the school department that were, that were never gotten. So, so the land swap, the land swap was never done. Faced, faced with several more months, years of, for the, for the land swap to happen, and us bringing the property to market, we asked if the land swap could be undone because of the city of Springfield, and, and you hate to say this in these forums, taking so long to settle the judgment against them. And it seems as though now we're being persecuted again.
I don't mean to cast any aspersions on the project or what you're trying to do.
Counsel Fenton.
No, you finish your thought.
If, if, what, what I'm suggesting this evening is, you can take your vote, if you can take your vote, and I'll, I'll, I would have brought this evening the, the paperwork from Ed Bakula to, you know, it, I just, I just don't quite understand why we have to, you know, carry this on longer. If I can't provide Ed Bakula's information, and he can't give you good reason, then I'm not going to. and he can't give you good reason, then, 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 then don't, don't vote, don't allow the special permit. Don't, that's fine. But I'm sitting here telling you, I have it. It's there, approved by, approved by the Law Department. And, and it was, it was really the inability of the city to settle this years ago. It, you know, to make restitution for the judgment is the reason, is the reason that we're even here. Because had the land swap been done anywhere, you know, had, had the restitution been made in a timely fashion, there wouldn't have been an issue. Had the land swap been done in a timely fashion, there wouldn't be an issue. So, I resolved it, and we have an issue. That's, so that's why I'm suggesting, could you, could you please vote on it? And if, if, if you're not satisfied with Ed Pacula's information that he gives you, please rescind it. I'm not here to, I'm not trying to hoodwink anybody, but I'd like to move forward.
Unfortunately, that option's not available to us. We can't grant a special permit and then rescind it because we don't like what the solicitor told us after the fact. So, if that were an option, I would consider it.
Maybe with a special, could there be a special, special permit, a special caveat added on to-
So, what is the urgency to complete this matter tonight?
Well, well, the, the, the urgency is the, the, the number of years that that land swap sat out there.
Yeah.
And it will, will, years now. And, and that's the urgency, because it, it, it gets frustrating when you, when you, when you try to resolve an issue and you create an issue from what you think you've resolved.
What council wants it?
And that's just what I did. And, and, you know, and we're not talking about an urgency. I understand we've all been in this, this council chambers for three or four hours tonight. If, if you speak to Ed Pacula about it, and my attorney, Steve Silverman, it's been north of five years on the land swap, north of eight or nine years on the settlement to the Slate family after the judgment. So, you're asking, what's the urgency? You, you just hate to see these things, you know, drag and drag.
No, and, and sir-
That's what I'm saying. If there's a way, if there's a way that you can vote on it, and if what I'm saying isn't true, rescind it.
I'm certainly not stating that in any way, shape, or form, I believe what you're saying isn't true. That couldn't be farther from the case. I do think, though, that throughout the course of this project's life, the city council has gotten portions of the picture regarding this development, and particularly when it's concerning to the dissolution of the land swap. My recollection is, the last attorney that was in here representing the property owner on this matter was Melinda Phelps. And my recollection is that when that attorney was in here discussing those matters, we talked about the additional frontage and that resulting in the ability for this property to be marketed for a variety of different types of uses, including but not limited to a hotel, is my recollection. So, I can't say those things with absolute certainty, but 30 days will give me the time to know the absolute truth of those matters and to speak to the solicitor about what's truly happening, and to Council Williams's point, to figure out how, as a matter of law, the solicitor can sign a document that invalidates what I remember to be an imminent domain taking by this body less than six months ago.
No.
Well, that's my recollection. It may not be accurate because I, you know, to my first point that I made going on probably 45 minutes ago, I had a lot of questions about this. So, I feel that with the input and advice of the solicitor, we can act what I hopeful, what I hope will be swiftly. I don't mean to cast any aspersions on your project or suggest that you're doing anything more than being forthcoming and trying to bring a new, exciting investment to the city. With that said, I hope you understand my perspective, that I would like the benefit of our attorney, who is taking actions on our behalf in this matter and isn't here tonight to tell us what he's doing or why. That's all. So, my motion to continue, excuse me, my motion to table stands.
Is a motion to table this matter?
Mr. President.
Council Edwards on the motion.
On the motion.
I have one quick question, which, the suggestion is that they're two separate issues. Did you not give, can, can you hear me? Did you not give testimony that you have a signed binding contract that is, with Ed Pacula for this agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm, then, if that's the case, then does it not state that this is two separate issues? One is, is that tonight we need to make a ruling on his petition for a special permit, and then that the appropriate council committee would be calling Ed Pacula in for an explanation of whether it was an imminent land taking or not, or why it was dissolved for the transfer of land. But are they not to, because the thing is, if, if we take his testimony as correct, if it's a signed contract, regardless of how he got to the contract, isn't it legally binding? And, first of all, and secondly, does he have to continue with a previously non-binding contract that wasn't signed and completed when he has in hand now a contract that is completed, signed, and legal? Is that appropriate question? And that, was that in the question form?
Very appropriate.
Mr. President, if, if I might, I've just, I've just had a conversation, and this might wrap it up for everybody. I've just spoke to the purchaser of the property. If you're not happy with the, the, the undoing of the land swap and, and, and the settlement that was made by the city for the reduced money, he'll honor the land swap. It, it, it's just, it doesn't, it, it's, it's, you know, I don't want to further complicate this, but all I'm saying is, we can, if you could just, you, you keep saying, what's the hurry? It's been years and years and years, and all because there was a settlement against the City of Springfield. My partner won the settlement. That was north of eight or nine years ago.
Wow.
So, we're anxious to move forward here.
I would guess so.
But you'll get the paperwork from Mr. Pacula. If you don't, the purchaser will, will, will honor the land swap. I don't, I don't know what else we can do.
Just-
Council Fenton. Finally, very briefly, Mr. President, and Mr. Bonavita, I very, and to the purchaser, prospective purchaser, we very much appreciate your, your offer and your diligence in trying to work with us here. If I fully understood the terms of the land swap, I would be in a position to say whether or not that would be something that would make me support this. But I don't know fully at this point what the terms of the land swap, swap were in light of its relation to the settlement. So, if you're saying that, you know, you're going to agree to the terms of the land swap as they were before, that's not something that I can currently, tonight with the information that I have, fully evaluate because-
Isn't the land swap a different-
There's a lot about that swap that I didn't know and still don't know about.
And where the special permit is?
So, obviously, we want to be respectful of, of the time that this property owner has put into trying to develop this property. I don't mean to say that time isn't of the essence. Of course, time is always of the essence for these types of deals. The reason I asked the question was because I was trying to ascertain whether or not there was another variable we weren't aware of that was putting you under an additional timeline. That's all, that's the only reason I asked. I didn't mean to suggest that we're going to make you wait longer or that you haven't waited long enough. Certainly, you have. It's just, unfortunately, I think we need the benefit of more information here tonight from the Law Department.
There's a motion on the floor to continue the matter.
Don't force the motion.
Council Rook.
Just on, on my colleague's motion, I'm not sure if the petitioner knows, but if you don't have enough votes to get a special permit here tonight, and I'm not the brightest guy in the room, but I would say from the discussion, it might be a little bit short, then there's a two-year delay to come back in for a special permit. I ate a lot of your meatballs, John, but they didn't make me the smartest guy in the room.
I think the 30 days sounds awfully good to me.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Council Walsh on the motion.
These people have waited eight or nine years to, to settle something with the city, and now with the delay, an agreement even, even further. I mean, I think that's a terrible way to do business, sends a terrible message. And, and if the city did have an obligation to meet a settlement, I don't understand why they didn't do it.
On the motion to table the matter, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it?
Terrible way to do business.
Item number five, Mr. Clerk.
Item number five is a special permit to reestablish a pre-existing non-conforming use for motor vehicle service slash a car wash at the property known as 1830 Wilbraham Road.
Please state your name and address for the record.
For the record, my name is Attorney Richard Sipek. I'm from the law firm of Ross and Ross, right here on State Street in Springfield. And I represent the petitioner, Petrogas Group, New England, Inc. They're here tonight for a special permit to, to, to rehab and reopen the property at 1830 Wilbraham Road, which is on the corner of Wilbraham Road and Parker Street. With me is the, the architect and engineers, Hussein Sevinia from MHF Design, and the representatives from the, the operations. This is a very simple, I hope, special permit application. It's simply to take the existing mobile, what was a mobile gas station with a car wash. It's been closed for over two years now, and if it hadn't been closed, we wouldn't have to be here. But because it's been closed for over two years, we need a special permit pursuant to Article 10, Section 10.1.42. The changes are pretty simple. They're going to add a little bit to the building. The existing building is 2,397 square feet. The, the new building will be 2,970 square feet. There were eight dispensing islands. It will be reduced to five dispensing islands because of the parking in front of the new building. The traffic flow for the car wash will be changed. It'll be now coming off of Wilbraham Road. There'll be, the, the operation side there will be a 7-Eleven store. That'll be open 24 hours a day. And the car wash will be open unlimited hours. It'll be closed by 9:00 PM. In addition to the special permit that we're seeking tonight, the, the operators, Petrogas Group, will be seeking a license for a beer and wine package sales on, on the site. Mr. Sevinia has worked closely with Mr. Dromy. We've got favorable recommendations with conditions that I'm going to speak to on just one condition in a moment. Last week, our, my client met with the 16 Acre Civic Association. There's a letter of recommendation with, from Attorney James Gregory, who's here this evening. We've had conversations all evening long. There is just one condition that we need to address, and that is, on the recommended conditions from Mr. Dromy's report, item number five, where it says there shall be no deliveries prior to 7:00 AM. In, in talking with the neighborhood association, we need one delivery by a van between 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM for fresh food that comes into the new store of operation. And they're not opposed to it. It, it will be done in less than 15 minutes. It'll be done through the front door, and all the other deliveries will be done during the day. But there, there needs to be, for the success of the operation, one delivery between 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM. That would be the only amendment to the conditions. All other conditions we're good with. We meet all of the zoning requirements. I just have, just post one rendering. It's going to be a beautiful redo of the site, and I'm trying to be brief. I'll be, we'll be happy. We have all the representatives here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this special permit request? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Attorney James Gregory. I live at 34 Mill Pond Drive in Springfield, and I am a director of the 16 Acre Civic Association. The 16 Acre Civic Association Board met last week. We had a special meeting because we usually don't meet during this month. However, we did call a special meeting at the request of Petrogas. We had our board members in attendance last week. We heard presentations from Hussein Sevinia Gill, who is the engineer for this project. We also heard from Trevor Moore, Vice President of Retail Operations from Petrogas. And after hearing their presentation and after asking questions, the 16 Acre Civic Association Board unanimously voted to accept or approve the proposal with the conditions of the planning board. We had a concern about the late-night delivery. We understand the need for it. The concern is based on the fact that there is a residence approximately 100 feet away from the front door, and the board has agreed to accept the one delivery late at night or in the early morning hours. I understand it's going to be via a van. So, the 16 Acres Board does not object to that. We did have some concerns about the height of the sign that would be at the corner. The zoning ordinance allows for a 30-foot sign, and that's what Petrogas wants to do. We would respectfully suggest that they consider a reduction in the height of that sign. The Pride sign across the street is approximately 20 feet. The existing mobile sign is the same, approximately 20 feet. We would like to see them reduce the height to 20 feet, understanding, of course, that it, it's up to them, essentially because the 30-foot height is allowed by the ordinance. But the civic board felt that the height of the sign really exceeds by 10 feet, at least, the other signage in 16 Acres. Essentially, we do support the proposal as indicated, specifically too, with the car wash being operated from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We would respectfully ask for that condition, which the planning board has indicated, again, because the car wash portion is close to that same residence. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Any was, and, Council, would you, do you mind waiting until after we hear from your opponents, and then we'll ask questions? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please step forward. Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please step forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please step forward. Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Council Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Attorney, how are you? Always a pleasure to see you. You've done a good job. What are the hours of operation for this 7-Eleven? The hours of operation?
20, 24 hours.
24 hours?
Yes.
And the car wash is?
7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
That's not 24 hours.
No, just, that's 9:00 PM in consideration of the one neighbor.
And, are, on the, on the recommended conditions, and I'll have to be guided by the clerk, you want to, you want to strike that, or you want that amended?
Just amended. Number five, where it says no deliveries, to, to be amended to allow for one delivery by a 16-to-20-foot, foot-long van for one delivery between 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM.
Okay, at the appropriate time, I'll make the, the recommendation.
And that's just for a delivery of fresh product.
And I'll, I'll make my comments after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner? Council Allen.
Could I ask Mr. Dromy to come up?
Who's this guy? Why are they open 24 hours?
I guess before I ask Phil a question, Attorney Sipek, where is, just so we're all sure, where's Wilbraham Road and where's Parker Street on that sign?
Good evening. For the record, Hussein Sevinia with MHF Design. So, on this, we did submit a site plan as part of the package that shows where Parker Street is and where Wilbraham Road is. So, just looking at the site plan and putting the rendering back, Wilbraham Road would be on the bottom of this sheet. Parker would be-
Over there.
Over here.
Yep, that's what I figured. Okay.
So, there are three existing driveways. We're looking to maintain all three existing driveways.
One on Parker and two on Wilbraham Road.
Correct.
So, my question is a simple one. The Attorney Gregory just asked if they would keep the sign relatively the same height as the Pride that's across the street, the height, which is roughly 20 feet. Is that something that's up to them? What, can they go higher?
Well, I mean, there, there are a lot-
Well, I mean, they're allowed to do, a ground sign in Business A is allowed to go 30 feet high.
Can be as high as 30 feet.
Can be as high as 30.
So it's nothing we have control over.
Well, you can, you can make it a condition that their sign can only be 20 feet. I mean, if you, if you want to add that as a condition. But they are, again, a ground sign is allowed to be up to 30 feet high.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me? Square footage-wise? 100 square feet. I think gas stations may be allowed a little bigger because they...
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, this, this location has been an eyesore for quite some time. And I remember campaigning on this exact quarter and having, you know, some of my supporters having to cross the street to the nearby gas station. So it's nice to see this development. I just kindly ask Attorney Gregor if you could just relay to, to myself when there's presentations of this matter that don't become before the act, the full 16 Acre Civic Association? Just please let me know. I'd really like to be a part of the questions and, you know, the presentation itself, because this typically would happen during the 16 Acres Civic Association meeting that I regularly attend. So I'll just kindly ask for future reference.
Yeah, of course, we would give you that courtesy. I think just because of the urgency on the part of Petrogas, we had to act.
No, I completely understand.
And, yeah, we certainly will apologize for not doing so.
That's fine. It's great to see, so.
And in the spirit of compromise, I'm willing to, to offer 25 feet at this voluntary reduction to 25 feet on the sign. On the request, the, the, the association wants to drop to 20. We're allowed 30. 30 is what everyone's approved or recommended. But in the spirit of compromise, I'm willing to allow for a condition of heights no higher than 25 feet.
Any final questions? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Counselor Bud Williams.
Yeah, just to the President, petition number five, there should be one delivery between 9:00 and 3:00 AM.
Correct.
We have to identify the truck.
Mr. Clerk, do you have that motion? Motion made by Counsel Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Walsh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Are there any other motions for amendments? Counselor Allen.
If you could just repeat what Attorney Sypek said about the 20 feet, I didn't get all that.
The, the attorney offered a compromise for a 25-foot sign.
25-foot sign? And the sign that's at the Pride Station is 20 feet?
It was, it was said that it was 20 feet.
It seems fair to me that they, that they should be about the same size. So I'd make an amendment that it be 20 feet or the same size as the Pride sign.
Counsel Williams.
I think he said the 5 was 30 feet?
No.
20.
What's the 5?
20.
Were they the same size as the 5?
They said it was 20. I'm just saying that out of fairness, then, then I'd like to make an amendment that this be 20.
Can we be heard on that?
There's a motion, there's a motion made by Counselor Allen for an amendment to limit the sign to 20 feet.
Or whatever the Pride, yeah, we'll say 20 feet.
20 feet.
Yeah, 20 feet.
20 won't work.
Is there a second to that motion?
Cool.
Seconded by Counsel Fenton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there, is there a comment on the motion?
Can we be heard?
We've, we've closed the public hearing. We can no longer take testimony. On the motion, Counsel Walsh.
It's my understanding that these signs can be 30 feet. And I think that was a very nice gesture to make a compromise and offer the 25 feet. So I'm going to vote against reducing it to 20.
The motion is to read, to, for an additional condition to limit the sign to 20 feet. Motion made by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counsel Fenton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion fails. Is there another motion for an amendment? Counsel Rook. Motion made by Counsel Rook, seconded by Counsel Williams to add an amendment for a 25-foot sign. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the ayes have it? Mr. Clerk? On the amended, as amended. On granting the amended special permit, a yes vote is to grant the special permit; a no vote is to deny the special permit. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Special, special permit is approved. Counsel Edwards, on the reasons.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of the finding.
All those in favor accepting the reason say aye.
Aye.
Do the ayes have it? Item number six, Mr. Clerk.
Item number six is an application for a special permit to operate a restaurant with a drive-up service window at the location known as 2433 Main Street.
Is the petitioner here?
Somebody should bring us some food. Hey, I want some fries.
Good evening. For the record, Hussein Savinia with MHF Design Consultants, representing GF Fellows Enterprises. They're a franchisee of Taco Bell. Site is located at 2433 Main Street on the corner of Main and Morgan Street. Proposal involves three parcels that are along Main Street. And we would propose a new Taco Bell restaurant as shown on the site plan. The Taco Bell restaurant would have about 42 seats, interior seats, and some outdoor patio seating. The store would be about 2,053 square feet. It would have a drive-through, so we are looking for a special permit for the drive-up window service. Our access currently is provided to the site with, via one driveway on Main Street and one driveway on Morgan Street. We would maintain the, well, we would move the driveway on Morgan Street, and we would close the existing two-way driveway on Main Street, and there would be an exit-only driveway on Main Street from the drive-through window. We've been working with the planning department for a number of months. We provided some sketches initially, went back and forth, and this is the design that we, we ended up with. We had a neighborhood meeting with the New, New North Citizen Council, which is right next door. Sometime in December, we went with the counselor and the, and the neighborhood council. And I believe we have a letter from them supporting the project with a number of conditions which we are agreeable to. The one condition was to beautify the florist building facing Main Street that's not owned or operated by Taco Bell, so that would have to be worked out with the owner of the property, I guess. So at this point, I think that's all, that's all for this project.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed special permit? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Say again, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the special permit? Please step forward. Seeing none? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the special permit? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is, my name is Juan Rivera, and I live at 65 Morgan Street, and I've been a homeowner there for over 30 years. It's interesting to hear because that both the entrance and exit is now on Main Street versus Morgan Street. I initially included my notes to respond to that because being in Memorial Square for over 30 years, and some of us that are better than this council for as long as you have been, we've had a lot of issues. We have had issues at McDonald's. They've gotten better, absolutely. We've had issues at the former Getty, which is now the Shell on the corner of Main and Carew. And we feel that, and when I say we, I refer to homeowners and residents. In the past couple of days, I've been able to get 32 signatures on a petition. Think if I have more time, I'll be able to get more. A lot of the people that I've talked to were not aware of this. We became aware when we received a letter from the city clerk in reference to it being on your agenda this evening. This, this opposition has nothing to do with the Delatorre family. They've been great neighbors to the neighborhood. They've been around a long time, nothing against them. We understand that it's appropriately zoned and the site is appropriate. We understand that. The issue of the letter that New North submitted, one of the things that really struck me was that there was no mention of residents. I understand that the Board of Directors represents the neighborhood, but out of the 15 board members that are on the board, only four live in Memorial Square. So for the individuals that I've had conversations with on Church, Morgan, Dwight Street, et cetera, one question that comes up is traffic. We all know that during the warmer months on Main Street, there used to be drag racing. The law enforcement took care of that. It's not an issue anymore. But there's still congregations taking place at the McDonald's across the street. I just heard that there's going to be a patio section as part of the floor plan of the Taco Bell. I have huge concerns with that. We also, I mentioned the Getty, which is now the Shell Station on the corner of Main and Carew. They also had numerous issues when they were open to all hours. Those hours were reduced as a result of that. So I don't understand why, one, the council, my friends at the council, approve this. There's other items that are taking place on the corner of Main and Morgan, which is the old New North Citizens Council Building. My understanding is that's supposed to be the future Barbara Rivera Community Center. I don't know how this is going to impact that. I think it will. I'm glad to hear that, as I mentioned, that the entrance and the exit is going to be on Main Street. There was concern about litter in terms of the trash. Right now, at, on the weekends, Friday and Saturday, after 1 o'clock, there's people dragging from McDonald's down Morgan Street because it is a one-way. And then tons of litter. It hasn't, like I said, it's not as bad as it used to be, but we have concerns with that. Also, the other piece is, there was reference, referenced earlier around public safety. On the corner of Main and Morgan, on Main Street, there've been several accidents, whether it's a car accident or pedestrians being hit. I didn't have enough time to get a CAD report. I think they still call of those, where you can see how many calls have been called at that particular corner. So overall, I think that this is going to have an impact on us, the homeowners and renters that are in that area, in terms of our quality of life. I was glad to hear that the, the entrance and exit has changed. I didn't know that. And we're, myself and a lot of the people that I've spoke to, we were at a disadvantage because we were never part of a meeting. And, you know, I don't know if there's a mechanism to refer to committee. I think I heard earlier, that's not a possibility. If that's not a possibility, then what I'm proposing is that you do not approve. Thank you very much.
So anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm short. My name is Carmen Rivera, and I live at 64 Goodrich, but I'm a homeowner at the corner of Morgan and Dwight. My daughter lives there. I bought the property for my daughter to reside there with my granddaughter. I'm, I'm still trying to, I didn't even know what was going on. I heard about this at the C3 meeting that I attended because they announced that certain businesses were coming in. So that's when the first, I first time heard about it. I haven't seen any plans. I haven't seen anything. In a little bit of time that we had, we tried to get ready to come in tonight. I mean, with more time, we would have been, you would have had this place full of people. I've been living in the North End forever. I've been in Springfield for 62 years. Some of the old members of the council, there's still a few around that, they're from the back. I notice a lot of new faces that I don't know, they're younger. But I'm trying to picture myself having a daycare also. The Delatorre Land, and they're good people, they've been good business. There's not a problem with them at all. It's just having that Taco Bell in that corner. It seems like everything now is like in that corner. We have the Placita across the street with a whole bunch of businesses. We have the McDonald's. And don't tell me there's no trouble with McDonald's. There are always troubles with McDonald's. Because, and especially, and I, I go to the casino sometimes. That's why I supported the casino here. I'm a casino person. So the drive-through window, yes, they go right through the window and they get their food, but they don't go home to eat the food. They stay within the parking lot. And some of you don't know because you don't live in the North End, but sometimes when we arrive at 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning from the casino, it's kind of a little bit scary. You have the, the young people with their cars, the motorcycles on the other end. And I don't even leave the ground until my son, the one that just spoke, is my oldest son, until he leaves the parking lot. I put myself at risk. And I also wait until the bus driver, the company, you know, that comes in, they, the bus leaves. Because it's crazy trying, and, and most of the people that go to the casino is elderly people. And I'm trying to make sure that they don't get hit, you know? So that's that. And then now you want to put, they're looking for a special permit to put in front of McDonald's. So then you're going to have the McDonald's here right through and Taco Bell here right through. And just in the between is the road. And I think, I'm thinking about, the North End's always been my life. And they know I battle a lot of issues. I've been through here with a lot of issues. Methadone clinic, we got everything down there. I think we got our share of everything. And they talk about, I'm trying to picture a, a drive-through. Where's the parking lot going to be? Because I haven't seen it. You got a daycare here in Delatorre Land because he's letting people park there from the council staff. That piece and the other piece is not a giant piece. And then they have a litter street, Sheridan Lane, between Delatorre Building where they parked the vans and the old Citizens Council Building that was knocked down, in which they're planning to rebuild. Because they're doing some fundraising to hopefully build the Barbara Rivera Community. So that'd be in the corner. Then also, you also have the park. The park is going to be under construction. So it's going to be really hard for the people in Morgan. And you also have the elderly housing. Morgan Manor, those are older people and people that are disabilities that live at Morgan Manor. So all that is right there. And I'm thinking about the kids too. I'm trying to picture a drive-through going through Main and coming out on, on one way, but they're going to take a little piece of it, of Morgan, and convert it into a two-way. People think it's a two-way already. It's a one-way. They'll be driving back and forth all crazy. So I can see, I try to imagine people coming out of the Taco Bell, trying to cross to Sheridan Lane that is out. If you go down there and look at it, that's an alleyway. It's not even a road. It, you know, and it's not well-kept or nothing because it just, something very small that crosses over to Church Street. Then you got the parish house. So it's a lot happening, and I don't know, when I heard about this, I said, you know, we go down, we have to, you know, express how we feel, you know? I'm here for the residents and the homeowners. I mean, it's bad enough that during the summer months, the parks excuse, and everybody uses our park if they given permission to use it, the, the baseball groups, and they go from Holy Chickapie everywhere. Sometimes they even park in the, in the homeowners' driveways, you know, in front, that you can't even get out. even get out. So I'm trying to picture all this, you know? We haven't seen any plans, anything else. I mean, that's a very small space for all this to happen. And how do they know what's one-way to people? How can you tell if it's a resident driving through or somebody coming from out of Taco Bell going across? So, you know, you have to think before, you know, I think that they're forgetting the residents. We've been there for a lifetime. I think that, you know, we can't, businesses are great. I love Taco Bell, I love McDonald's, I like all those businesses, and I use them. Now, when you try to put everything in one corner, you know, it's too clutter, it's too, you know, it just doesn't work for the residents and for the homeowners. I even went as far as saying, if they do this, you know what? I don't have a problem. I'll put a sign in my house and sell it and leave because I have that option. And abandon the neighborhood. A neighborhood that I've been here, I came in fifty-two and I came to live in that neighborhood. And I, you know, and I could be in the south end, East Springfield, anywhere, but the neighborhood that I consider my neighborhood is the north end. That's why I'm here. And I'm sick, I've been sick all week, but I said, this is important to me, I have to go even if I'm sick. So that's why I'm here, and I hope that you think about the children that are next door, the residents, the homeowners, and make a wise decision. Thank you.
Thank you. The opponents have exhausted their time. I will now allow five minutes for rebuttal. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor or would like to rebut anything that was mentioned? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Again, Hussein Sevinski with MHF Design. We did follow the procedures. We submitted, we met with the New North Citizen Council. I'm not sure how, you know, individuals weren't invited, but a lot of their concerns were raised at the meeting. The drive-through would outlet directly onto Main Street, so there's no opportunity for them to come back and linger on-site as mentioned. As far as making the road two-way, that was mentioned at the New North meeting as well, but our intention is not to make the road two-way. There was a reason for that decision, to make it a one-way away from Main Street, to alleviate congestion onto Main Street. For a few other, the outdoor seating concern, that was put in, I believe, just discussions with the planning department, I believe, so that's nothing that's, you know, definite. Litter, it's a nice, you know, they maintain a nice facility. This is what the building would look like, you know, a lot of greenery around the perimeter of the site. There were some recommendations for fencing, additional shrubbery. I don't know what, you know, what next step there is, I guess, to alleviate some of their
Three minutes left for rebuttal. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please step forward.
Yep, my name is Richard Russ. I'm the area director for GF Enterprises for the Springfield metro area. Presently, we have three stores in the Springfield area. In the city of Springfield, we have about a hundred employees. In the Springfield metro area, this would be the eleventh store, so we have about four-hundred-and-fifty employees in the Springfield metro area. And the company for GF Enterprise, we have about twelve-hundred employees. Originally for this site, we met with the North End Citizen Council back in two thousand thirteen. We had talked to Sheriff Rivera when she was a state senator, and she connected us with the right people. Last summer, in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, we walked up and down the street with Jose Claudio from the North End Citizen Council. He showed us the best areas that would be selected, what spots would be best. So we've worked with the North End Citizen Council along. I'm not sure what other methods would be other than going door-to-door and knocking on each door, but we did go through the citizen council. We did work with Jose Claudio. In the letter you're going to see, there's many conditions that he set up. We've met all those conditions. We're willing to work with the neighborhood council. You know, I'm not sure what other steps could have been taken other than, as I said, going door-to-door and knocking. You know, the same thing as for this council, you know? I'm a member of the city. I've been in, lived in Tally Ho Drive since nineteen sixty-three. I've lived in Springfield, went to West New England College. There are certainly things that you guys vote on as a city council that I might not agree with. It's my responsibility, I hope, to come and watch you on TV or represent, but I believe the North End Citizen Council, we have worked with them, and we're willing to make some more accommodations for the neighborhood if we can. You know, we've already worked with some scholarship things. The nice thing about GF Enterprises was all of our employees, we like to get within three to five miles of the store. You know, there's very few opportunities for somebody to go from, you know, we have Xena. She started as an employee, hourly employee, now she's a store manager. You know, she has a GED that Taco Bell helped her get, and now she makes well over sixty thousand a year as a store manager. So there's a lot of opportunities with it, and that's about it.
Opponents have exhausted their time. I will now allow five minutes for rebuttal from the opponents. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, there's a lot mentioned about New North, and they're in support. I think it's, knowing the history of that particular part of the city, Main Street, between Carew and even Jefferson, I think the city should have at least made some efforts to at least look at a traffic study, to see the impact of additional cars entering that part of Main Street. You go drive by there around noon, lunchtime, between McDonald's, the trucks, La Plaza Mercado, now you're going to add another entity, that it's going to be impossible to go down Main Street. So I think, we talked about public safety earlier. I think, you know, it's unfortunate that New North didn't include everyone and didn't ask these questions around traffic study, et cetera. I did have a conversation with Mr. Dromi, I hope I'm saying that correctly, and he had indicated that that was part of the DPW. That should have been something that was at least asked for before, it even came before you guys. That didn't happen. And those of you that know what I'm talking about, I hope you can really look at that and make sure that this doesn't get approved. Thank you.
We have about three minutes left for the opponents. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Angel Quintana. I live at Church Street. I happen to be the closest to this restaurant here. And I think it's a good idea, bringing business and all this to the area. But I do have several concerns with the traffic, the loud noise, music, unnecessary noise, old trash. There is a little street between Morgan and Church Street, Sheridan Lane.
Sheridan Lane?
Sheridan, yeah. And people use that to throw trash in there and do all kinds of things. And I do have a big concern with that. I haven't seen the plan exactly, I don't know how it's going to. Somebody told me that that little street's going to be closed. The question is, when? I don't know what's going to happen. But my biggest concern is the trash, the noise, the traffic. I said, it's right now, we've got a big problem that I'm coming from Church to Main. There's a blind spot there that was caused by the DPW when they sacked there. And coming to Main Street is a time bomb. And adding more traffic there, it's going to be worse. I know, you know, I like the idea of bringing more business to the area, more jobs, that's good. But along with that, you know, in my case, being so close to the restaurant, what's going to happen with, you know, all these problems? Like I said, the noise, the traffic, the trash. I don't know if they have a plan for that. McDonald's already there, every summer they go through a bunch of problems. And having this restaurant there, like I said, not only if they have a good plan to work with those situations, that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
We have about a minute and a half left for the opponents. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? All right, the clerk will. Say again, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will close this portion of the hearing. Are there any questions from the council? Counsel Gomez.
I know particularly we have a question, I'm just going to, I have to, it wouldn't be right for me to not say anything. I was contacted by the New North Citizens Council to come down to a meeting with this gentleman and the neighborhood board, well, the neighborhood subcommittee, that's what it's called. And the neighborhood subcommittee, myself and Jose Claudio and this gentleman were at the meeting. And I went in total, you know, support of the neighborhood board. I was asked as their ward counselor to come down. They took a walk outside, I followed some of the people on that board. They stated about, they were afraid, I heard Ms. Rivera state that there is a daycare next door to it, and they had also had that concern, and they have like kind of a tree line on the side, and I guess what you stated, that the green is like six feet away from that area where those kids are. From that point, we did have the conversation and the concerns of Sheridan Lane, and also how would that kind of work with, because when you come down to that neighborhood, Osgood is a one-way, Morgan is a one-way, and those streets kind of just, they shoot in and out. And the food trucks, also what Johnny had stated, was also brought up, and they spoke about that, and then I had advised them through the Young Professional Society that those food trucks wouldn't be there because there's going to ordinance that's being written right now to move food trucks away from restaurants. So where they're parked now, if it does go through, those food truck situation would be spoken about. And then, the strong issue is that, I know that on Morgan Street, after the flower shop, there's, after the Morgan Manor that Carmen had brought up, is like four houses on the right, and then mainly on the left is Morgan Park, which Morgan Park is also going to be going through a reconstruction because of the grant that was in the city federally. They're going to fix the whole Morgan Park, so, and then now with the north end master plan from Chickapie Line all the way up to Osgood, which is just a street over from Morgan, so that whole area is being, I guess, the habitat is looking up. The quality of life when it comes to driving and bringing people to the Taco Bell and coming up the street and down Sheridan is a concern to mine, but the fact is that I assumed, and I think that, you know, I was told that the neighborhood, after the neighborhood subcommittee, was going to talk to some of the residents, and then from speaking to the residents, they had a neighborhood board meeting which they finalized, I guess, another meeting that you came to in the afternoon the next week? I did not. You did not go to that meeting? No, I didn't know, I'm assuming. I'm just assuming. So, they sent the letter forward. I didn't, obviously, you know, with my, what's going on with me right now, I wasn't going to come, but I knew that they were going to come and, you know, I like to hear both sides. I was going to go table the matter, but I wanted to hear both sides because they did wait here for four hours, it's almost eleven o'clock at night, and it's only right that I let them speak. But I also just wanted to say that the neighborhood board did support it. We listened to them, and I'll just let the will of the council speak for itself. They're a very respected family. My, it's really hard for me because my daughter is related to them. So regardless, I'm still walking on eggshells. You know, that's family there, so, at the end of the day, their concerns still are my concerns. But a neighborhood board was elected, and it's unfortunate that this situation is where it's at right now, but I am also looking forward to the forty jobs, you know, the real change of our neighborhood that's coming. The possibilities and the opportunities, it's just the unfortunate part that you happen to live on Morgan Street that bothers me. And I kind of, and the funny thing is, when we're talking about it, we always knew, it's like, yo, listen, we need to knock on the door, so, you know, we're going to take care of it, we're going to let the neighborhood know, and, you know, at this moment in time, the neighborhood had supported it, and where I'm at is, I want to support it, and I think I'm going to support it. You know, it's just, I really am not doing this, and it's not, it's not a personal, it's not a personal thing with any of you guys or with the thirty-three residents. I just really want to know, how can we resolute this after? You know, because right now, we're at a moment that we need to push forward, it's eleven, and I do, I asked, you know, I tried to talk to you guys about doing that, but you guys want to push forward, so we're here, and I, you know, I love you guys, I love you guys too, I appreciate everybody's support, but I just want to know, I just want to change a neighborhood that has been the last one looked at for many years, and when it comes to developing money, a lot of people don't really want to come to the north end and do much. So this is an opportunity for young kids, forty part-time jobs, and put our kids to work. I'd rather it be like a taco place that I own, but it's not the fact, it's Taco Bell. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner or the opponents? Counsel Walsh.
I don't have a question, but I have a concern. I mean, we had a discussion late earlier about the neighbors that are impacted by some of these decisions, and I think it's unfortunate, for whatever reasons, that all the neighbors and the abutters were not included in the decision. So I would like to make a motion to continue this because it doesn't seem to be any timeframe with this, just to give everybody that's involved, particularly those people on Morgan Street, an opportunity to say what they have to say. That isn't to say that this won't eventually happen, but at least it would happen with everybody having an opportunity to have input.
So motion by Counsel Walsh to table the matter, seconded by Counsel Ash. All those in favor of tabling this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? That will be tabled. Is there any more business before the council, Mr. Clerk?
Item number seven is a special permit for motor vehicle rentals at the property known as ten twenty-seven East Columbus Avenue.
Mr. President, at the request of the neighborhood council president, that this be continued to the next meeting, or reschedule.
Most of the neighborhood council, I wish to continue the matter?
Oh my God, not even tell them.
Is there a second? Item number seven. Seconded by Counsel Hurst. Counsel Fenton on the motion.
Mr. President, just on the motion, Leo Florin has been here all night. I just want to, before we vote on the motion, before we vote on the motion to continue, I want to make sure that that's consistent with what you were looking to do here tonight, Leo? If you could come up, just on this motion of...
Poor Leo.
Basically, what we're here for tonight is, we were just notified of this. We have, we have no clue as to what this special permit is for, whether it's for cars, whether it's for trucks, I have no idea. We don't know the hours, we don't know, we don't know anything about the project. I was called by one of the abutters today and asked to come down and find out, and ask if what this thing can be tabled until they meet with the neighborhood council to find out exactly what this project involves.
Okay, good. Then we're in agreement. Perfect.
All those in favor of continuing this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Matters will be tabled. Is there any further business before the council, Mr. Clerk?
I have no further business before this body.
All right, we'll stand adjourned until our next regular meeting. Have a good evening.